And then we'll have...
Councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Friscat.
Here.
Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Okay, so I think we have Mr. Nash, who's going to come forward and introduce the members of SMUHA and talk about some fancy houses.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Pappan, councilmembers, my name is Michael Nash, and I'm the current president of the San Mateo United Homeowners Association, also known as SMUHA. SMUHA was founded several decades ago to provide a forum for discussion and communication among the homeowner and neighborhood associations that are active in San Mateo and to involve the city when that is desired. This evening, I'm very proud to announce one of our signature events, the 10th Annual Outstanding Home Maintenance Award. Anna Keer initiated this program when she was president of SMUHA 10 years ago. Anna felt it was an opportunity to profile the many beautiful neighborhoods in San Mateo and recognize that every home is someone's castle regardless of size, facade, or zip code. Every neighborhood association represented by SMUHA was asked to pick an outstanding example of a home and homeowner who demonstrated pride of ownership. To support the program, Anna used to go around and take photographs of the awardees' homes for presentation at the ceremony. Furthermore, she was, by working with Susan Loftus, then-city manager, the honorees were invited to be recognized by the city council and to be televised on our community network station and on channel 26, 27, or 99. This became the formula for our awards program, and tonight's awardees will be viewable on these channels for the months of June through September. So, on the 10th anniversary of these awards, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Anna for her vision and energy in creating the award by presenting her with these flowers as a token of our appreciation. So, this award is not determined by a single set of criteria. Each association sets its own policies based on the unique characteristics of their communities. This approach embraces the diversity of the city and showcases the pride residents have in all neighborhoods. Seven of our member associations have chosen to make selections from their neighborhoods. Much appreciation to our honorees, who make our city beautiful for all of us to enjoy. Thank you for being outstanding. Many thanks to our city council for making these presentations. Many thanks to the SMUHA representatives who made their neighborhood selections, and to Donna Devote for managing tonight's ceremony. Please remember, SMUHA says, "Pride in your community is contagious." Mayor Pappan, would you please join me in the podium for the presentation of the awards? Great, so the first award, we're doing this in alphabetical order by the association, so the first award goes to Baywood, and the winner is Tierney and Carrie E.
Come on over. Congratulations.
Is this working?
Okay.
All right, the next award winner is Beresford Hillsdale Neighborhood with Beatrix and Mark Esparsa. The Central Neighborhood Association's awardee are Julie and Chang Sun. The Home Association of North Central San Mateo awardee is Gary Canonica. Unfortunately, he can't be with us tonight, so the association's president, Adam Nugent, will accept the award on his behalf. North Shoreview Neighborhood Association awarded the award to Jonathan and Kristen White. And last but not least, the Sugarloaf Homeowners Association made the award to Yvonne and Johnny Liang. So, time for a picture.
We're good with pictures around here. Come on down. Everyone, come back over. Come this way. Come on down. Come on this side. Forget it directing these things.
Yeah, please hold open your awards.
Oh yeah, there you go. We'll flip them back. You guys don't want to stand together? Okay. Do you have any...
Jeez! We'll get a little bit closer. We're all neighbors.
There we go. We can stand on the side. Do the prompose, Michael. We're... Not lost in this fair city. Since we already did row call, then maybe we can move on to consent calendar.
Pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, Councilmember Eric Rodriguez's travel authorization. Item number two, Community Development Block Grant Funds for the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan. Item number three, Senior Catering Services Contract. Item number four, San Mateo County Gang Intelligence Unit Agreement. Item number five, School Crossing Guard 2019-20 Agreement. Item number six, Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act Letter of Interest. Item number seven, State Route 92 El Camino Real Landscaping Resolution and Grant Application. Item number eight, 2018-19 Street Rehabilitation Phase II Project Agreement. Item number nine, Basin D Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project Construction Agreement. Item number 10, the wastewater treatment plant grit reg and scum hauling and disposal contract is being pulled off of consent. Item number 11, wastewater treatment plant supply of ferrot chloride contract. Item number 12, wastewater treatment plant supply of sodium bisulfylate contract. Item number 13, Community Development Police Information Technology and Public Works Department's Classification Updates. Item number 14, Employee Salary Schedules. Item number 15, Fiscal Year 2019-20 General Obligation Bond Tax Rate Levy. Item number 16, Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budget Appropriations. Item number 17, Downtown Business Improvement Area Resolution of Intent for Annual Renewal. Item number 18, San Mateo City Employees Association General Unit Memorandum of Understanding Amendments. And item number 19, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion project owner-controlled insurance program resolution and agreements.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve everything, but it was item 13 that came off? Is that right?
Item 10.
Item 10. Time flies. Second, okay, so all those in favor of adopting items 1 through 19 excluding 10, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nope, so those motions pass. Alrighty, now, let's get to item 10, that was taken off the consent calendar by...
Me.
Councilmember Bonilla. Okay.
Yeah, I pulled this from the consent calendar because I noticed when I was looking at the bid summary and reading the details on it, that something looked off to me. And what I found when I researched it was that the prevailing wage that is being proposed to be used by the apparent low bidder, which is SNS Trucking, is a substandard statewide prevailing wage for on and off hauling from construction sites. The wage is $22.50 an hour, and the only thing on top of that, the only benefit, is $0.43 an hour for vacation and holiday. So I decided to look in what the actual value of somebody hauling waste in San Mateo County, which is what this is, coming from our wastewater treatment plant, was. And what I found was two different contracts that exist here in our county. One is the South Bay Waste Management Authority, that I'm a member of. Current wage there right now for a driver doing this work is $44.96 an hour plus benefits. And at the Allied and Republic Waste Services of San Mateo County, current wage is $43.40 plus benefits. And so, I'm looking at this, which is the one page that's laying in front of you there, and I see a waste of standard wage. And my concern is that, number one, that it's misclassification of workers, for one thing. And if this were to go through, I would actually have to file charges, because I believe it's breaking the law. And number two, this is a poverty wage for where we live. We have people now doing this work, who work for Republic Waste Services of San Mateo County, earning a decent wage in a county where we know it costs 60 bucks an hour to rent an apartment. These guys are only making 44 and 45 bucks an hour. So, I'm asking that the council consider going to the next bidder, which is Republic Waste Services, and/or consider waiting a couple weeks and asking this low bidder to come by and justify their use of this, what looks like, inappropriate wage standard to me.
Okay, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I want to hear from Public Works, see if they have any other insight on it. Azalea?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Azalea Mitch, Deputy Public Works Director. So, we issued out a contract for bids. We did receive two bids, and the city's policy is to issue to the lowest bidder. We did include in the contract a requirement for prevailing wage. The hauling of grit is not defined by the Department of Industrial Relations as a public work activity, so there's actually not a prevailing wage definition or requirement. However, we are using the prevailing wage for the hauling from a construction site as the baseline. So, we did include that as a baseline in the contract. So, the lowest bid would be required to pay a prevailing wage that is not classified for this type of activity, but that's what we're using.
What's it classified for?
There's no classification from DIR, because it is not considered a public work project. It is...
Then how did you determine it was a prevailing wage?
Oh, so it's not a prevailing wage, it's just that's what we included in the contract for the bidder to pay prevailing wages?
So, we used the prevailing wage rate, even though we're not required to use the prevailing wage rate?
And the prevailing wage rate is based upon the prevailing wage within this area being $22 an hour, so it's a geographic area that you raised based on?
Right.
Yes, it's based, it includes San Mateo County.
Okay, when I, I got one more question. So, when I look at this, the grid that we have, it's the bid summary, when we're talking about unit price of $54 an hour, or $54 unit price, what is that?
So, that's per...
That's per ton?
Yes, it's, well, it's, yes, it's...
Per unit of weight?
Per unit of weight.
Whatever that may be. Okay, all right. So, it's prevailing wage in the area, that's the 22 bucks an hour?
Yes, it includes San Mateo County, yes.
But hauling grit is not a public work activity?
Per the Department of Industrial Relations, yes.
Okay. More questions? Questions from the council? I kind of interceded there.
I did have one, I have one speaker too.
I'll get to that in a second.
Let's go to the speakers.
No more questions? Any other questions from the council? No, okay, we'll open up to public comment. You had one speaker slip, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mike Mahoney.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Mike Mahoney, General Manager of Republic Services of San Mateo County. Doing business for purposes of this contract is Allied Waste of North America. We have been your hauling contractor for many, many years here in the county. We have hauling operations in the north county. We also own and operate the only sanitary landfill in San Mateo County, at Ox Mountain, and that's where this, where this grit goes. There is not another disposal site in San Mateo County. I was a bit chagrined as well when we had the indication on the prevailing wage, that we were using a wage of $22. Our, I think it's Councilman Bonilla mentioned, our drivers are paid roughly $43.50 an hour. We make a contribution of nearly $5 an hour into their pension, and approximately $2,100 a month for their health and welfare benefits. That's compared against the 22 odd dollars, and I think it was $0.43 on the benefit side. I do take issue with the fact that this is not a garbage issue that's deemed public works. It's been picked up by garbage companies for years. We've used our labor for years, and it goes to a landfill, just like anything else in San Mateo County, anything that comes out of the transfer station in San Carlos as well. So, I would ask as well that, I think the contract expires June, July 1st or so. If we could take another two weeks, I would like to further investigate as well, take into a, look into a wage. I can clearly tell you, because I've been in the garbage business in San Francisco throughout San Mateo County for many, many years, $22 is not anywhere near a prevailing wage for doing this type of work. So, I would ask that the council take a second look at it. We can provide any type of additional information you want, there are other, some, a couple other ancillary answers, and I think, you know, once you take a look at that, you know, present a little bit more clear picture than what you have. So, ask for a two-week delay. If it goes over the July 1st date, be happy to extend at no additional charge our current contract. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Hi, Rich Hedges, San Mateo. We ask for bids in my homeowners association as well. We don't always take the cheapest when we look at the quality of the work. And some of the things that I'm always concerned about when we're looking at new people bidding is, what do we lose when we lose the institutional memory of the people who've been doing the work for us? And what problems are we going to have trying to get the work done as we expect it to be done? And then when I see that this particular low bidder is going to be taking the money out of the pockets of working people, it gives me great chagrin. I can tell you now that my wife and I have a reasonably good income, and our disposable income is disappearing. So, doing this to the people who've been doing the work here may end up making layoffs for them, and may end up shoving them out of the county or into the streets. So, I think we need to look twice at this, and if it's not a great distance in the cost, we need to give it to the people who've been doing the work and doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add on a couple of things.
I got one more question.
Sure.
Can you entertain my question first?
Yes.
Okay, what is your timeframe, Ms. Mitch?
So, the contract does expire in a few months, so I, and it is my understanding if that, that we would have to go out and rebid this, right, to...
Well, it depends upon what the council wants to do.
So, any, but I believe that awarding to someone else based on the bid that we did put out.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
So, there is, under our municipal code, we do not have to award to the low bidder. You have the authority to award to someone other than the low bidder. There are, you know, criteria around that issue. But I think that if the, and let me also make clear that while we think what we, what we put out in terms of bid meets our legal requirements, as a policy matter, the council can certainly go beyond what the, what the legal, the minimum legal requirements are, and establish criteria that are, for example, payment of wages to the drivers that are higher than prevailing wage, if that's the policy decision the city council wants to make. If the council wants to make that decision to establish higher wages for the drivers, then we'd recommend that we put that in a, in a new bid package and solicit new bids based upon that new criteria established by the council, because that was not one of the criteria that was established in the bid solicitation this first time around. So, those are basically your choices. You can award to the, to the recommended low bidder, award to someone else based upon sort of the criteria, we can talk about if you'd like to, in the code, or say you want to start over with, with the new criteria in terms of the, with the pay to drivers.
Just getting one more question. Is it that the wage is tied into the unit price? And that's how they figure their unit price?
Right, it is, so, but the requirement is for the prevailing wage, which is built into the unit price.
So, when I see $54 a unit, part $22 of that is...
No, so the, so the rate is based on hours, so this is, this is a unit weight, so within, based on the tonnage that we haul, and then the hours that it takes, that wage is built in there.
I see. So, it might take two hours plus for a unit to be hauled?
Right, so, we, right, so we don't know how many hours, right? How much of that is the actual labor that goes directly to the employee?
I got one more question, if you'll indulge me. And how much are we paying currently? Is that in your, I didn't...
So, currently, two years ago, city council did approve to basis on a, on a rate, an hourly rate of 40, 46, I think it was $46 an hour. So, that was the decision made two years ago.
And that was a two-year contract, up again?
That is now.
You just put prevailing wage, this is what you got?
Exactly, yes.
You'd have to change the criteria if we delayed it, or we might just be delaying, you're suggesting, just to look into it further, whatever that means?
Yeah, and I have some further discussion on that.
Let me, I'm gonna take it over to you then, Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that if you look at page three of each of these two documents lying on the desk in front of you, you'll see what the actual locally negotiated wages are, that we've been using for this contract for many years. And, and so, with respect to that, I mean, this is something where people actually live here, work here, they have a home, a mortgage, kids, they're working for these wages, and these are, like I said, the importance is locally negotiated wages based on area conditions. And the condition, the major condition here is the cost of living. This is our waste that's be hauling, and we're also creating a much larger carbon footprint with hauling all the way to Kirby landfill, which is outside of Morgan Hill, versus right over the hill to our Ox Mountain landfill. And I know that, because that was what the, the contractor said they were going to haul to. I asked some questions today, I got those responses.
SNS is going to...
Kirby landfill, outside of Morgan Hill.
Morgan Hill, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Also, yeah, the carbon footprint, locally negotiated wages, the importance of that is, we have a very high cost of living here, and I mean, if we want to, I mean, 20 bucks and $22.50 is a poverty wage, really it is, for here. Okay, I'm sorry, okay, for somebody who's driving a diesel truck all day, I think we want to have decently paid people. It's not an easy job. Being constantly on the road is difficult, okay? People get tired, people have issues, it's not an easy job. And I think we should use the people that have been doing the job, who are professionals. I don't know where these other people get their, their, their drivers. Also, the city said, "We expect you to pay the prevailing wage." They didn't say which prevailing wage, they say it's the contractor's responsibility to pay the appropriate prevailing wage. If you look at the bid, RFP, that's what it says. So, when asked today, the contractor said, "Oh yes, this is the prevailing wage I want to look, I want to use." So, if you look at, it says that it's inappropriate in Alameda, Contra Costa, Del Norte, Humboldt, under localities, Lassen, Modoc, and then San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara, Shasta, Siski, and Trinity. So, if you live in Merced, this wage might be okay. Or in Modoc, which is the far northeastern corner of California, next to Oregon and Nevada. But for here, I'm sorry, in my opinion, this is ridiculous. So, I would, I would like to recommend we go to the bidder that we've had over many years, or that we at least delay to take a look at exactly what this is, because I don't believe that this classification, on and off hauling to or from a construction site, would be upheld if the DIR had to make a decision about it.
What'd you do last time, when you sent it out to bid? Did you just say prevailing wage in the bid package?
I was not here two years ago, but I believe that was probably the case, that that was the requirement, prevailing wage.
And I'm assuming that Allied is union, the other ones are not?
I actually do, right, I do not know that information.
Okay.
I know that that is correct.
But this is, what you've presented here is a Department of Industrial Relations classification...
Straight off the DIR's website.
But you're telling me this is not a wage that requires a classification, not a type of work that requires it, so why are we using this, I guess, even though this is below what you've...
The city, the city said in the RFP that we want you to pay the prevailing wage.
So, this is what was produced when you required?
So, when asked of SNS, this is what they produce, this is the wage we'll pay.
I see. So, they relied on what?
Well, we, we did as well. This is the DIR rate for hauling for drivers, and this is what this contract is, it's driving. Like I said, there's no prevailing wage for this type of work, so that was our, our baseline.
Except that this is not a construction site, this is waste.
Okay.
And we have two locally negotiated contracts for waste hauling.
I think the key point is that the prevailing wage laws apply to construction, public works projects. Hauling, this, this is an operational, this is not a legal requirement that you pay these drivers prevailing wage, under the state prevailing wage law. In theory, we could pay minimum wage for this, but we don't have to. We, the city said, "We want you to pay prevailing wage for someone who engages in this type of work," and that's how you get the $22 an hour. But that wasn't something required by law, it's just something the city required of the bidders to pay prevailing wages.
And the public works usually pertains to construction, is that what you're telling me, rather than this sort of operational?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I've asked plenty of questions. What do you guys want to do? I know what you want to do.
You know what I...
You're gonna make a motion, or what are you gonna do? Any other questions, comments, before we entertain a motion? Councilmember Gothols?
Couple of questions. So, the drivers who are in the, these collective bargaining agreements that we were handed this evening, what is their classification?
I don't believe that the activity is actually covered by DIR, so those are negotiated contracts that, you know, an hourly rate was determined by them.
Through the collective bargaining...
For the, yes.
Not through...
There's no prevailing wage for that.
Not through the DIR.
There is no prevailing wage for that?
No. That's why all we have is locally negotiated contracts.
Because that work of that industry is not subject to the prevailing wage law.
So, we could still classify them as the same thing that the drivers in these collective bargaining agreements have, and there still wouldn't be a prevailing wage? bargaining agreements have, and there still wouldn't be a prevailing wage? I think those are all my questions for right now.
So is, is my understanding correctly that this is just kind of a gray area where we don't have clear policy set by council, or is this, or is it clear, we just, some members of the council don't want to follow that policy?
I, I think this is, I think there hasn't been established policy as to, for this contract, what the, the city's expectations are with respect to how much these drivers will be paid. And so I think Public Works said, "Well, we, we know that there's a preference for at least prevailing wage, let's require at least prevailing wage be paid as part of the, anybody's, any bidder's proposal." And so certainly it's not, would not be illegal if the council wants to require more in terms of pay, but that hasn't been established as, I think it's just, we haven't asked, I don't think Public Works has come to the council and asked, "In every contracting situation, do you want us to require an X level of pay?"
So there are probably more instances of things like this that haven't come up in a while, so that's why council's never weighed in on it, said, correct?
Right. I mean, I would say that, so we have a lot of, you know, construction projects that fall under the California labor laws. For operations and maintenance, things that are, do not fall under the construction, we don't, they're like, our city attorney said, "We don't have a, a mechanism, right, to pay something additional." Our, our practice within Public Works has been for those areas to use the prevailing wage requirement, which is consistent with construction. However, it is not required by law. If the council wants to pay higher amounts, then yes, that is a matter of policy that hasn't been defined, and therefore, right, not, not a directive to Public Works.
And the reason I ask these questions, because generally, it's my preference that we, we debate policy and create policy, and then we apply that policy to a particular contract, and we don't debate the policy on a case-by-case basis with the, with the contract. And that's, that's kind of a little bit of the issue I, I have with this. I got some comments.
And through the mayor?
Okay.
Yeah, I have some additional comments, because the question of policy is coming up, and I have thought about it, and I do have an idea, which is that where there is no actually applicable prevailing wage, rather than allowing somebody to pick one that is questionable, in my mind, then we should actually look to locally negotiated contracts to see what's been established in the area for this work. And that's what these two contracts in front of you represent. We could establish a poli, policy that guides us to do that, in lieu of trying to create some kind of a prevailing wage.
All righty. Any other comments?
So I, I think we have a choice to make. I think the only fair thing to do is either to go with the lowest bid on this RFP, or to define what our criteria are that we're gonna judge the bids by and send it back out to give everybody a fair chance to bid on. So the only decision for us to make is, do we want to increase what the drivers are paid in our RFP, and put it back out, or do we want to accept the lowest bid?
And change the definition on the RFP?
Yeah. Put everybody on that.
The prevailing wage would be perhaps?
Equal footing, give everybody a chance to put in a, a bid.
Based upon what might be done contractually in the area?
Right, yeah, right.
And I agree with that. I, I think it would be unfair if we just said, "Okay, we're going to the next bidder," because they were playing by the rules as they saw them, and then we're kind of changing the rules a little bit.
Yeah. Also be unfair to displace a couple of workers, because somebody else came up with a wage that doesn't really apply.
This two-year contract you're looking for again? Okay. All right. So I, I'm thinking there might be some consensus for a motion to cer, to redefine what was meant by prevailing wage, to rebid it, and see where the chips fall.
One sort of wrinkle to introduce into the discussion is that we are-
Just when we're making progress.
Right, right, right. No, I won't upset that apple cart. But we're getting to the expiration of the contract, so I think what we would do, if the council is doing something like start, directing staff to start over, is that between now and the next meeting, we would talk to the existing provider to see if they would give us an extension of time for a certain date, so that we can go through that process and get another.
We got that commitment tonight, and we're going to rely upon it. Is that sufficient consideration?
Worth the paper it's written on, right? So, so we'll, we'll spend the next, I think we're, we're probably fine, but we'll spend the next couple of weeks, and if we have to bring it back on the 17th for some different action, we will. If not, then we should be good to go.
So we do have that commitment. Mr. Mahoney can speak to it. He told me he would gladly extend the contract.
Okay. So we'll be here on the 17th, if it doesn't go well. Do you need a vote from us, then, for this motion?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to, assuming we can get an extension on the existing contract, is to rebid this particular work, based upon a new definition of prevailing wage that we will be deciding on?
I think we could call it area standard wage. It's not really-
Come again?
Prevailing wage is a legal term, so.
Area standard?
Yeah.
You can live with that?
Yeah.
Is that clear, as we're typing in this motion? Not so much? Okay. So there is a motion by Councilmember Bonilla that is asking that we rebid this particular contract with a new definition of prevailing wage based upon area standards.
And so, just for clarification, we would be rejecting the bids that we have received, preparing a new bid package, and that package would include, for the wages to be paid to the drivers, a wage that is, reflects the two negotiated contracts that exist in the county for, for, for the payment of drivers.
Yeah, thank you. Also, I'm wondering if we can add something that talks to the carbon footprint. Hauling waste, exorbitant numbers of miles, is not good for air quality. Is anybody else thinking about this?
Let's get to the wages.
Okay.
Let's keep it simple. But I, I got our city manager making eyes over here. Drew Corbett?
I just wanted to suggest that, notwithstanding this action tonight, that we, staff comes back to council with a study session item, so we can get greater clarity and greater policy direction on the specifics as we move forward, as to what council desires with respect to these sorts of contracts going forward. So we will look to do that, probably for the July meeting.
And that'll come before we decide on this new bid package going out? You want to have a study session before you send it out to bid again? Am I hearing that? Okay.
So moved.
So we'll have a formal rejection of this current item, and we will set up a study session to determine a more palatable definition of prevailing wage, and then we'll rebid this and take it up again. All those in favor? Wait, do we have a second?
I moved it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That most passes 5-0. Okay. Let's move on to public comment. Thank you very much, and, yes. If there was a screaming, they would have. Okay. So with respect to public comment, just so you know, members of the public wishing to comment on an item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council this time. However, please note, the state law prevents council from taking action on any matter that has not been agendaized. Your comments may, however, be referred to staff after public comment, and public comment's limited to 15 minutes, there's an opportunity for additional public comment later on in the agenda, should we so need it. Are there any speaker slips for public comment, Madam Clerk?
I do have one. Anne De La Rosa.
Okay. Come on down.
Good evening, city council members. I'm here tonight with several of my neighbor, Hayward Park neighbors, to speak about the planned Caltrain maintenance track and storage yard that is to be constructed between 10th and 14th avenues. This is not a temporary project, but a permanent maintenance yard that entails all the noise, pollution, debris, and unsightliness that comes with the rail yard. We all understand the need for such facilities, but what we don't understand is the placement of such a yard directly beside 100% residentially zoned neighborhood. This will be as close as 10 feet, yes, 10 feet, from four residences and within 30 yards of many, many others. And the most upsetting part of all of this is that most of the work from this yard will be done in the middle of the night. Wasn't until Caltrain started dumping railcar after railcar of dirt and debris to the level of up to five feet above street grade, next to the tracks behind our homes on South B Street, that we even became aware that a project was planned for our neighborhood. When my neighbors and myself questioned Caltrain as to what was happening, we received several answers, none of which were accurate. It wasn't until we asked more detailed questions, such as, "Why are you grading to the track and not to the street?", that answers started to trickle forward. It became quite clear that only a handful of people knew what was planned, and that brings me to my point. The neighbors and I believe this project was advanced without truly or faithfully abiding by the spirit of, or requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act. The major point of SEQA requirement is to allow those most affected a voice to have their concerns heard. A resolution and negative declaration was passed at the April 5th, 2018 Joint Powers Board meeting, with absolutely no discussion and zero comments or letters from Hayward Park residents. Now, from my perspective as a Hayward Park resident, the only way this could have happened is if none of us were aware of the proposed project. I can only find one public notification, a tiny notice, in the San Jose Mercury News mentioning the proposed comment period. So unless you subscribe, and not many people in my neighborhood subscribe to the San Jose Mercury News, and by chance had read the paper on that particular day, cover to cover, you would have missed it. It's wholly unacceptable to believe that Caltrain did a thorough initial study and community outreach to arrive at an unmitigated negative declaration when this project will clearly cause a visual degradation to a bedroom neighborhood of counted 50, at least 50-plus windows that look directly out to this proposed rail yard, where all sorts of rail equipment and construction equipment will be stored. Traffic disturbances from maintenance trucks using the same streets originally designated for home and garage access. There'll be substantial, substantial nighttime noise from heavy equipment loading and unloading, air horns, diesel engines starting, stopping, and idling, all within 10 to 50 feet from people's bedrooms. This will lead directly to permanent sleep disturbances. It's for these reasons we believe this project needs to be stopped. Alternatives need to be identified, and/or the true need for this facility needs to be reevaluated and vetted with complete public involvement.
I'll need to have to ask you to wrap up.
Oh, sorry.
I know your marks are prepared.
With the direct assistance of Councilman Rick Bonilla, who I'd like to publicly thank for his input and concern, a community information meeting has finally been scheduled with Caltrain. It will be here at City Hall on Tuesday, January, June 11th, from 6 to 7. We hope we can look forward to the council's attendance and support on this matter. Thanks in advance for your time and the work you do on behalf of the citizens of San Mateo.
Thank you very, very much. I know there's been discussions with Caltran, Caltrain and Public Works on that, so we'll just keep that moving forward. All right. So Cary School, you're up. Is that right? Public hearing, zoning reclassification.
I need to make an announcement before they get started. Because I have an ownership interest in a property within 500 feet of Cary School, I will be recusing myself from this.
We'll call you back.
Okay, thank you.
So this is item number 20. Take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Rendell Bustos, Associate Planner and Staff Planner for the project before you this evening, which is a public hearing for a zoning reclassification, zoning code amendment, and expansion project for the Cary School. So firstly, beginning with the project site, the Cary School has occupied its current site at One Cary School Lane since 1955. The site is adjacent to Alameda to Las Pulgas to the west, Juniper and Sarah High School to the east. The site also borders residences along 22nd Avenue to the south and along La Salle Drive to the north. The site is comprised of two parcels with a total parcel area of 96,040 square feet. The Cary School is a private educational facility with grades pre-kindergarten to fifth grade. Under this project, the school is requesting various campus improvements, the first of which is for a two-story classroom addition of 4,286 square feet. The classroom building would comprise of four classrooms, a multi-use room as well as meeting rooms. Secondly, the school is requesting to place two temporary portable classroom buildings in an existing lower play yard. Each classroom building would comprise of two classrooms each and would be permitted onsite during construction of the classroom addition. And lastly, adjacent to the classroom addition, the school proposes to make improvements to their courtyard, including landscaping and new shade structures. In order to accommodate the requested campus improvements, the school is also requesting a zoning reclassification from R1B to R1B slash Q8 to implement a Q8 overlay designation. As part of that request, an amendment to the zoning code would be required to implement development standards of the Q8 overlay, mainly related to the floor area ratio. Lastly, the school is also requesting a special use permit modification to increase student enrollment by nine students and employment by five FTE staff. So for some additional detail on the first two requests, the current zoning of the site is R1B, which is the city's single-family dwelling zone. It should be noted that school facilities in San Mateo are permitted via a special use permit in the R1 zone, and many schools such as Sarah High School and St. Matthew's Catholic are also located in R1 zone. The Cary School is requesting a Q8 overlay mainly for an alternative floor area ratio, abbreviated FAR. So the primary purpose of the Q8 overlay is to establish a higher FAR than what the R1 zone permits. So given the school's lot size, the R1B zone permits an FAR of .21, translating to a maximum floor area of 21,008 square feet. The current campus, however, exceeds that number by almost 9,000 square feet. The Q8 overlay would provide a maximum FAR of .39, translating to a maximum floor area of approximately 37,455 square feet. And so this would permit the requested physical expansions of the site, as the school's billing additions were totaled to an FAR of .36. So the campus's excess in floor area occurred in 2012, in which staff miscalculated the floor area as part of that expansion project. The zoning code in the R1B allows .5 for the initial 6,000 square feet of lot area, plus a smaller percentage for a lot area greater than 6,000. In 2012, staff took .5 for the entire parcel area in error. Prior to the 2012 expansion, the school was in compliance with the FAR, and since 2012, this is the first request for additional floor area by the school. And so lastly, the school is requesting to modify their special use permit, abbreviated SUP. As noted earlier, the R1 zoning district permits school facilities subject to the approval of an SUP. Throughout the life of the Cary School's SUP, the school has modified to either implement or change provisions for maximum enrollment of students and maximum, maximum employment of full-time staff. So this shows that from beginning, beginning from 2001, this shows the incremental increases the school was approved for, to increase staff and students. Under the specific application, the request, the requested maximum enrollment is 258 students and a maximum of 52 staff. So before this project, came before the city council, the project was reviewed by the planning commission in October of 2018 as a study session, and again, as a public hearing this past April. At the public hearing, the commission recommended approval of the project with a vote of four to one, with modifications to two conditions of approval. And at the public hearing, the planning commission expressed concern for the school's parking agreement for off-site parking. The school has, on a continued basis, maintained a parking agreement for off-site parking at the nearby Alameda offices located at 1900 to 2000 Alameda to Las Pulgas to supplement their onsite parking. The school's conditions of approval specify the minimum number of parking spaces and require that if the parking agreement is terminated, the school must provide proof of a new executed agreement, or because the parking ratio is based on number of staff, the school does have the option of reducing the number of FTE staff to meet the zoning code's parking ratio. Also, given the concern from the neighborhood, as well as the planning- Also, given the concern from the neighborhood as well as the Planning Commission at the study session, staff engaged Hexagon Transportation Consultants to analyze and estimate the impact of the school's expansion. The study estimates a net increase of 18 trips, concluding that the expansion would not result in noticeable impacts to traffic. Hexagon also observed the school's pickup and drop-off operations, which are managed in part by the school's annual parking and traffic plan. The plan implements strategies such as staggered start and end times, multiple drop-off locations, and minimum supervision by staff. And lastly, the project's classroom exterior design was reviewed by the Canon Design Group, who made no recommendations for changes and found the design compatible with the existing architectural style of the campus. So to conclude, staff is recommending two actions by the City Council this evening. One is to adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and the special use permit modification, and two, to introduce an ordinance for a zoning code amendment and zoning reclassification. So this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. A representative from Hexagon Transportation Consultants is present this evening. Should there be questions related to the traffic study? And the applicant is also present this evening and will be making a presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll have the applicant now? You ready? No? Or you just want to answer questions? Was there a presentation by applicant or just questions?
Yes.
Presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and former mayors and council member. It's an honor to be able to speak to you about a project and a school that many of us in the room are very passionate about. So just additional biographical information on our school. Again, we are celebrating our 90th year. We've been on the current site, as was mentioned, since 1955. We currently serve 249 students. We have really committed to diversity of all forms, including socioeconomic diversity, and we currently serve 116 San Mateo students. And we have some representation in the room, so if you just mind standing, if you are a San Mateo resident and supportive of this project. Thank you. So again, I am Duncan Lyon. I am the head of school. I am in my eighth year at the school. I am the fifth head of school in Cary's long history. Like a picture tells a thousand words. One can see that the school was onsite and then the residential neighborhood and the requirement for coding came thereafter. I think you can also see that buildings from 1955 are at their end of their useful life. So this building will provide us with four needed classrooms. It'll provide a much-needed dedicated after-school space. As you might know, increasingly, families are dual income. They're working until late hours, and they're increasingly dependent on our after-school program. We need a dedicated space for them. It also has a staggering effect on pickup as families come later after the concentration at pickup time. As well, there's necessary rooms and offices for our special education program. Needless to mention, improving, taking down this 1950s construction and replacing it with a modern building will dramatically improve the seismic safety. We are hoping to be and really committed to be the first school in San Mateo that would be a green-ribbon school, the high threshold that the U.S. Department of Education has set for environmental sustainability. To do so, we would need to be carbon neutral, and we have plans for solar currently. We are a peninsula clean energy user, so we've taken steps in the right direction. We also have plans for water reuse and conservation. We are and always have been of the city and for the city. Every year, we commit $20,000 to community improvement in San Mateo and in the city and into the county. These are some entities that we currently work with and will continue to work with in the past school years and in coming school years. Just to cite a couple of examples, Hands-on Bay Area, this is a group that's similar to kind of Habitat for Humanity. We are partnering with a Title I school in San Mateo to improve their campus facilities during the same time that we're hoping to improve ours. For those of you who don't know what a Title I school is, it's schools that are, over half the population, receive free or reduced lunch. We also have been talking with Sheila Kansian about ongoing partnerships with Parks and Recs, setting up our Beresford Reading Buddies Program, our senior singing program, and we are discussing a five-figure donation to the Parks and Recs Foundation for the betterment of Central Park, Beresford Park. So over a year ago, when we first approached staff about our plans, this is what we discussed, was just over 4,000 square feet, nine students, five staff. The focus of the conversation is where it always is, intensity of use, on pickup and drop-off. It wasn't about parking. We went through staff, working with the staff who's just been wonderful to work with, we went through planning, study session, and then in the last planning hearing, we all of a sudden got into a conversation about parking. There wasn't one commissioner who was concerned about pickup and drop-off, and he was kind enough to come up to the school and observe it directly, and he complimented us on the pickup and drop-off procedures. So intensity of use has not been a concern, and as was borne out by the Hexagon Transportation So what we are asking council is to look at conditions 10 and the related 51A. This is language from 2012. This was the, or actually is, the current parking condition from 2012 when we went through the planning commission. This condition works for the school. It has worked for the school. We've always been in compliance with this and every other condition. And the current condition, excuse me, the proposed condition through the planning commission does not work for the school. We don't think it'll work for the city, and we don't think it'll work for the neighborhood. Simply put, our staff do not park on the street. They won't park on the street. But we need the flexibility under current conditions to be able to work with a parking provider and not have the constraint of a two-year requirement, which is what was proposed. So that's what we are asking you to consider, and we do think that the Q overlay is the tool that would allow for this to happen, and we already have a condition that works for all parties. I'm available for your questions.
Who wants to go first? I'll go first if you want. Go ahead.
This is actually for staff. Can I address my questions to staff or is this only for? All right. My question for staff is that prior to the planning commission hearing, your recommendation to the planning commission was for approval without those two modified conditions?
That's correct.
And I guess I'm curious, I know that we have a procedure in Planning Commission very well, are very aware of the Planning Commission is supposed to weigh in, and we need to weigh that, weigh that opinion, but I'm curious what staff thinks about those two additional modifications.
I'm going to pull up the slides to show the two modifications.
So I think in reviewing the planning commission's concerns, excuse me, the planning commission's concerns, they were primarily having to do with the off-site parking, what would happen if it changed over time or if the office building were to sell and we're a new property owner.
Ron, I'm going to get you to turn on that mic.
Yeah, it is turned on. I'll try and speak a little bit louder.
Or just closer to it would be preferable.
Yeah. So the planning commission was concerned about what would happen if the office park were to sell, if there was no agreement. They felt by having a two-year agreement, that would at least set a minimum timeframe that there'd be a guarantee that that off-site parking is available.
Can you explain, so if that, for that, I understand how a two-year agreement would give a good guarantee, you know, why not go for a 10-year guarantee? What is it that staff feels that is protecting our city from the deal falling apart and all of a sudden everybody parking in the neighborhood?
Well, again, as Rendell explained, if they were to lose the off-site parking agreement, that would require a reduction in faculty because that's what drives the parking requirement. You know, I think we'd have to figure out what that program is rather than, okay, you folks out of the building tomorrow, but that we would set up a program with the applicant to figure out, okay, with the loss of the lost street parking spaces, number one, are there alternative methods that could be used? Now, again, that would take a public hearing to determine what those alternative methods as opposed to the office would be. Number two, to come up with a timeframe that would actually be reasonable for the reduction in staff so that the staff member, the number of staff members met the amount of parking that's being provided without those off-site parking spaces.
Got it. That's all the questions I have for now.
I have a question. Isn't it actually, Ron, I thought that what I saw in the 2012 language was that they were provided with 30 days. If their parking arrangement fails, they have 30 days to find some alternate arrangement?
That is correct. That's the language of the original condition. I think Rendell's brought it up. And again, it would talk about how they would either find new parking or, number two, reduce the full-time equivalent employees. You know, to be honest, I think we would work with the school rather than in the middle of the year yanking faculty. I think we would work with them and say, okay, where are we in the semester or whatever quarter? And then when will that quarter or semester end? Okay, we're going to need compliance from there on after.
Thank you. I have another question. Seeing that they're only proposing to add nine students and five staff, I'm wondering, you proposed to add five staff, right, with this change? Is the 20 spaces shown actually enough? Would it be possible to negotiate 21 or 25 enough to meet your actual current needs?
Yes, thank you for the question. We currently have a parking agreement that is in effect that has 30 spaces. So we actually have an agreement for more spaces than we need. I also want to add, if I could, that I contacted Serra High School and I also contacted St. Matt's Catholic. They both have Q overlays as they are in residential neighborhoods. Each school told me that while they do have off-site parking, neither school has any time duration associated with their agreement. So this would be a unique condition for us, and one, again, that we're not sure makes any sense for the city ultimately for the reasons we've explained about. Nobody wants to lay off teachers.
If I may, through the mayor, the issues with Serra and St. Matthews are they meet the zoning code onsite. This project does not. And so for Serra High School, it was, well, what will you do about football games or basketball games or other? So they, after going through a public hearing, decided that they would construct the parking garage, although technically that is not needed to meet parking requirements. Similarly, St. Matthews has an offside agreement for certain large events which are outlined in their special use permit and overlay zone, special services and such, that they will provide off-site parking for that overflow, but that is not required by the zoning code. For example, we don't determine church parking by the amount of people who show for Christmas service. So it was intended to be a short term for those additional events that may happen, but to meet the zoning code, they did not need to provide either the parking garage or for St. Matthews, they did not need to provide the additional parking off-site.
For their daily operations.
For their daily operations, that's correct.
Okay.
So I have an additional question. What is required to meet the zoning code for parking here, Ron?
So in the commercial data form, attachment six, the total number of spaces after this expansion, if approved, would be 48 spaces minimum, and so the school has 27 spaces onsite, so that would demand a minimum of 21 spaces offsite.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Joe?
Nope.
I got a few questions for you. Just relating to the use in general, by my math, nine students is an increase in 3% of your population, but then you were increasing your full-time employees or equivalent by 10%. And I wasn't, is that going to happen right away? I mean, it seemed that they were out of proportion to one another.
Let me explain how we get to 258. We have seven grade levels in our school. The first grade level is pre-kindergarten. By code, we are allowed to have 18 students in pre-K. From the remaining six grades, kindergarten through five, we have 40 in a grade level. That's the educational target we have. So 18 in pre-K, 40 at every grade level, that math equals 258. So we are currently at 249. That's why we're asking for nine more students. So that's the math there. Regarding the increase of staff, when we came to this, to the planning, they asked us, let's open the book on Cary one time and let's close it. You've been in compliance, you know, let's ask for everything you want. So we were initially having conversations about floor area ratio, so the staffing is part of that consideration as well.
So do you think you'll be there very quickly, or is that something you're going to build into?
That's something we'd have to determine, yeah.
Could you be more gentle?
Well, again, I don't, I got to go through my staff to talk about that.
Okay, all right, that's fair. So you need 48 spaces. Hold on, I had a couple more questions here. Can you give me the percentage of how much you think the pickup times are staggered? You mentioned that you have a lot of parents that are working folks that come later in the day. Do you know what percentage that might be? And I know that will fluctuate over time, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Sure. So of our 249 students, on a daily basis, we will have about 60 students who will be in our after-school programming.
60?
Yeah, either our after-school adventures or our extended care program. That's why we need to have a dedicated space to be really committed to this, to this program. So it ultimately has a staggering effect between 3:30 and 6 o'clock.
I got, okay, hold on, I had a couple more. So they started, or they are zoned for a floor area ratio at .21?
Correct.
So in 2012, they went up 10 points, right, to .31? Is that what your slide said?
That's correct.
Oh, it is, okay. And then with this, we'd be to .36, so about 15 points over, right?
Correct, but the requested maximum in Q8 would be the .39?
That's the maximum, right? But with their increase, it would be to .36? What they're proposing today?
What they're proposing to construct is .36. What the school is requesting under the requested Q8 would establish a maximum of .39.
But they won't be back anytime soon for that.
It's a better question for the applicant. My understanding is that there's-
Could you be verbal in that response?
That was a question to me? No, ma'am, we will not be back anytime soon for that.
You can call me Miss, but that's all right. All right, so, all right. Money potentially to Central Park, that perked me up.
Can I follow up on that?
The Central Park or the other? Can I get back to you in one second? I just want to, let me hit one more item. So you're concerned you might not get a two-year contract, and is it that the 2012 requirement of this 30 days, if you're not in compliant, that continues on, does it not? That condition?
That's correct. So the conditions presented to the commission still will include the 30-day timeframe for a replacement- the 30-day timeframe for a placement agreement.
And what's the, what clock are you on with respect to that lease? When does it run?
The current agreement we have runs through July of 2019, and so we've set up conversations with the property manager, Bridge Commercial Real Estate, who runs 1900-2000 Alameda, to renew the agreement.
You're expiring in less than 30 days? July 1 or July 31?
July 31st.
July 31st. So, you've got 60 days to renegotiate at this moment?
Again, we've, we've been in, that building has been sold, and we, it used to be Heinz, now it's Bridge. We have maintained an agreement. We, this is just the, the course of it. They want to negotiate 30 days before to renew. They run out of corporate offices in Atlanta. This is the process that they have.
I'm not so convinced about Atlanta. We do have the internet, but nonetheless, so they, but they usually don't renew you unless 30 days before. That's kind of been their-
That's been, that's been the cadence.
The previous owner, and then this new owner may be the same way. You just don't know.
I, I did speak with them last week, to meet with them, to, they're very aware of this hearing, they're very aware of, of request. We, I was asked by Planning Commission if we could get a two-year agreement, and I said, I don't think we can get a two-year agreement. That the property owner gave us a one-year agreement. But here, again, we think that any duration is somewhat problematic, because they, they just don't want to have that on their, on their books, per se. However, and I will just say, with regard to special events, May 9, we had a largest event we host, which is spaghetti dinner. We had probably 400 people on campus. We noticed the neighbors. We coordinated with Sarah High School. We didn't receive a single complaint for the, from the neighborhood about it. We used the space over at 2000 Alameda for special events. We've got a very good relationship with them. What we like about the 2012 language is, it gives us the flexibility so that we could go to another entity. Again, the underlying code, and maybe City Attorney Mason can elaborate on this, restricts the use to within 200 feet, because, again, this is about a residential neighborhood. But, again, we think the Q overlay is the tool that allows us to get over that, because if we could find parking that's beyond 200 feet, we have a lot more entities that we could interact with.
And it has always been that you've been on one-year lease terms?
We've always had a one-year lease in effect.
That's all they've ever given you?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm just curious. Okay, you were gonna add something about Central Park.
No, I gotta ask a different question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I ask the City Attorney, or Ron, do we need the Q overlay in order to go past the 200 feet right now, or can we leave the, the current term, which is, if they don't have parking, we can deal with it then, and they have to come up with a plan within 200 day, or within 30 days? Does that make sense? Do we have to resolve that right now with a Q overlay, or can we just leave it the way that it is with, within 200 feet or 30 days?
But with respect to the Q overlay, we need to do Q overlay in any event because of the FAR issue.
Okay.
So, that's, that has nothing to do with parking.
So, when we do the Q overlay, is the 200 feet an issue anymore?
They would comply with the 200 feet. We're not changing the 200 feet currently.
Currently, if, if they lost their lease across the street, and they have a Q overlay, does the 200 feet still apply?
Yes, it does. I mean, to think ahead, one thing that could happen is they could request an amendment of the Q overlay to allow parking within whatever distance seems to be appropriate, based on how you're gonna get from point A to point B if it's not 200 feet.
We could deal with that another day, though?
Yes.
If that problem arises, we can solve it when it arises?
That's correct, because either the school would need to reduce the number of staff to meet the parking, find parking that's within 200 feet. You know, there, there are mechanisms, but I believe the zoning code does specify a 200-foot limitation, which is the reason that they chose the office building, is because it's within that 200-foot radius. So, the 200-foot radius would stay. You could change it later if-
For now, okay.
We looked at the overlay zone later and said, okay, there's not parking for the school at the office, there's a site that's 500 feet away, and here's the program that the applicant is suggesting to facilitate movement between that parking and the school, and that would be ultimately up, I think, to the city council to determine, yeah, that seems like it's reasonable, or no, we need you to comply with, with the condition and the, the 200-foot radius as written.
I think I answered my question there. Thank you. Money to Central Park, I'll call on you for that. Okay, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Your presentation to the Planning Commission was different than the presentation, I think, that we saw tonight, and there was much more of an emphasis on the public benefit that you provide as a school and as part of our community, and I appreciate that, and I applaud that, and I want to make sure that we're giving you enough credit for all of the public benefit that the school and the students and the parents are to the community. You outlined some of those things tonight. You mentioned the Title I school that you're partnering with during your remodeling. You also mentioned things that you're doing in a buddy program with, with reading, and there was a whole slide on it. Could you give it to us again so that I'm giving you proper credit when people ask me?
Sure, I was just trying to be considerate of everyone's time. If, I, I'll try and outline this a little bit. So, we have an ongoing partnership with Samaritan House, which is part of what we're trying to do here with our service learning program, is getting our children in service, particularly working with other entities, or with other children who are also in service. So, the idea is kind of win-win-win, and we try and support nonprofits who are doing this. Hands-on Bay Area is one such group. As I mentioned, they're sort of the habitat for humanity for schools. We also have a Share the Love Project, which benefits the Children's Fund, County of San Mateo. Life Moves, you might know, formerly known as Envision Shelter Network, we've had a long relationship with them, both staffing their events, and also financial contributions. Again, talking with Sheila Kanzian, we, we have lots of ideas about tree plantings along the Alameda. Again, we want our families and our students. You know, frankly, we could have filled the room tonight with, with Cary families. We just got a representation here. For these events, we get 80 folks who will turn out for, for a Caring at Cary event.
They've been calling us. Been calling us.
What'd you say?
The, the mayor was asking if I would clarify the, the donation to Parks, the City Park Foundation. I appreciate that you're making a commitment, and you're in conversations with Sheila Kanzian, and we appreciate that very much. We do have a lot of very expensive remodeling that we're doing for Central Park, and Central Park is, is really a jewel for San Mateo, and, and it's something that we appreciate very much. So, going forward, I, I hope that you can be very generous with our park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Questions, questions?
No, no.
We'll open it up to public comment then. Thank you very much. Don't go away, there may be more, but you can-
All right.
Thank you. All right, do we have speaker slips?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. I have four speakers. The first speaker is David Karp, followed by Tatlu Avila, and then Ajit Barwana, and then Rossi Martin.
Okay.
My name is David Karp. My wife and I are neighbors of the Cary School across LaSalle Drive in the Gardens complex, and we've been here seven years now, and we've never been aware of any negative incident with the Cary School, and we're pleased to be neighbors. We, my wife and I walk early in the morning, and it usually coincides with parents dropping off their children, and they all seem very happy, skipping off to school, and they're always Cary persons, teachers or whatever, greeting the cards, the cars, and helping kids out. I'm a retired architect. I've worked on projects in the US and abroad, and, for instance, I've worked on the Salk Institute in La Jolla. And it seems that the major part of the project is updating the, the physical plant, which makes a lot of sense in terms of attracting and, and keeping a current flow of, of excellent parents. So, I can only say that I and my wife certainly approve the requis, the request of the Cary School.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tatlu Avila, followed by Ajit Barwana.
Hi, council members. My name is Tatlu Avila. I, until March of this year, I used to live on 20th Street, 492. Been a part of the community for about 10 years in the area in San Mateo, and four years in that location. The school has always addressed any concerns that as neighbors we might have had with them. They've been responsive, and it's, it's never been an issue. They usually give us notice about events, if they're gonna have anything that's outstanding or things like that. My family and I are very supportive of the program. We were actually benef, members of the Cary School up until now that my daughter's graduating from there, and we always felt like, as neighbors, it was pretty nice, you know, receiving all the notifications ahead of time, and we knew that they were taking care of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker is Ajit Barwani, followed by Rossi Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ajit Barwani. I'm a resident of San Mateo, and I've got two daughters that go to the Cary School. I'm a big, I feel very privileged to live in San Mateo. I'm a new resident. I just moved here a little over, about a year ago, and one of the things that I'm excited about, what makes me feel proud of the school, is that the part that we talked about earlier, which is how much they give back to the community, and as, as residents and have two young girls, I want to teach them that giving back is a big part of, of life, and that's been, that's been what, what the Cary, Cary School's been all about. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Sir?
And our last speaker is Rossi Martin.
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. I'm a father of two students at the Cary School. I've been in San Mateo for about five years now, moved from San Jose, and I could say the Cary School has made a huge impact on my children, just their development, and seeing how the teachers have a huge impact, and knowing who my kids are as a person and not just another student, is a huge value, and I encourage you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No other speakers?
No other speakers. Okay, so we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm thinking about it, because I was hearing the discussion about the parking and the 200-foot limit, and it seemed as though Ron and even Sean had said that that's something that we could further discuss, and I'm wondering, when I look around that area, 200 feet, if you don't have a deal with either 1900 or 2000 Alameda, 200 feet is not really far enough to get you anyplace else. So, I'm wondering if we could, while we're at the discussion here, increase that to 1,000 feet, so they could have more room to look for places. I mean, 1,000 feet is a quarter mile, not that far of a walk, but the school could provide a shuttle, and I think we should ask the school if they're interested in that.
Like the Elks Club, or the Cal Club?
Something, yes.
Oh, I was gonna say, the Golf Country Club?
Yes, right, exactly.
Parking right over there, I'm sure they-
Maybe we can look and see how far away the Elks Club is, and kind of draw a radius to there.
All right. Let me get an answer to that question. Hang on one second. Can you expand it as part of this approval? You're going Q8 overlay, you can expand it rather than limit it now to the 200? I don't know.
Yes, the purpose of the Q8 overlay is to deviate from the otherwise required applicable zoning standards, so if you wanted to affirmatively address that issue in Q8, you could do that.
I see. Okay. Did you want to add something, sir?
We'd be very amenable to that. Again, the more flexibility, the more, we feel like there's enough sticks here, and these are carrots that would really help us find, find partners in the unlikely outcome that we didn't have an agreement with 2000 Alameda.
It's the same price. Okay, any other questions? Questions, questions? And we'll open it up for a comment from the council, or entertain a motion. What do you want to do?
Some comments.
Comments, go ahead.
Yeah, for me, it's not a question of whether or not to approve the project. I'm in favor of the project. It's just a matter of the, the conditions that were added, because I think that, from what I understand of this, of this project, if, if we keep these current conditions, it will effectively probably be the equivalent of a, of a denial of the project, at least in my opinion. I, I do not think that it's reasonable to ask the office complex, who is not in the parking vending business, to, to ask them for more than the standard year, because it just doesn't make sense for them as a business. That's not their business, and it can only be, the, the fee that they probably get from Cary is probably negligible in the grand scheme of things, and it's probably be worth, it would probably be easier for them just to, to not do it, as opposed to have to explain to their, their board why they have this other thing on their books that can tie their hands for future deals. And I, I, it's, it's hard to hire and keep teachers here, and I think that, I believe that Cary would, the, the prospect of having to lay off all their valued faculty is enough, gives me enough guarantee that the Cary School will do everything possible to remain in compliant to this, to these terms. The San Mateo community values its schools, public and private, and I think that we need to be flexible here. We should not stop Cary from modernizing, and we should monitor the situation closely, because we have enough cards in our, at play to, to, to ensure that the cars are not being parked in our neighborhood streets. I, I guess, I guess I would not be in favor, at least at this time, to be expanding the, the radius. I think 200 feet from now is, is, is kind of, is what it is, and if something happens, and then we'll have to deal with it, but it keeps, it keeps more cards with, with the city and this council for more options later. So, I, I wouldn't want to give up some options in the future, or tie the hands of future councils, so that's where I stand.
I just want to say that I agree with everything that my fellow council member just said, Eric Rodriguez, and I want to thank all the parents for coming out tonight. I think that Cary is a part of our community. It's an important part of our community, and one of the things that was missing at the Planning Commission was really that argument about the, the public benefit that we receive from having Cary as part of our community, and I want you to know, we appreciate it very much. We appreciate your presence here tonight. I'm sure none of you ever want to serve on a city council after tonight, but thank you for being here anyway, so.
The money's so good, why couldn't they not?
Thanks. I have a few comments. I was on the Planning Commission in 2012, when we imposed, imposed the parking condition on this school, and I think it's important to notice that since then, there's never been an issue with parking. The school has always completely observed every single condition, every requirement, and this school is really a very fine, upstanding institution in our community for, like he said, 90 years. So, I want to be able to make sure that they understand that we appreciate that, and I want to do that by saying that, you know, I believe with the Q overlay, that the 2012 condition language that the city provided was the actual language to use. So, I recommend that we drop Planning Commission, condition of approval number 10, and modify, I think it's condition 52, I think, replace it with the E1.4 condition from 2012 that was shown. Okay, if you want to, here, I can read it to you right now. The parking agreement shall be maintained, which provides minimum of 20, although we decided, I think we decided 30 is a better number for off-site parking. They have a contract now for 30. Why shouldn't we have a condition that allows that 30, right? Also, parking spaces for faculty and staff on a weekday basis at the across the street 1900-2000 Alameda site, and should that become unavailable for use during that time, then we do have, from that time, the language that says within 30 days, they shall submit an alternative plan for parking. Although I think Ron said it would be hard to force them to drop teachers in the middle of the year. I think we should try to leave some flexibility in there. So, I'm not sure how we do that. If we look at, I mean, how- how we do that. If we look at, I mean, how many days is a school year? I mean, I think it's altogether, what is it, 10-week summer vacation, I think? So, so it's...
175 days.
175 days. Who knows? It might be a week into the first semester, and something happens to the parking, and they need some flexibility. So I think we should try and include that, so that they're able to make the arrangements they need and not cause undue hardship on them. And I think also that, I don't think that asking for 1,000 feet, as Ron and Sean said, under the Q overlay, is excessive. It might save problems farther down the road. Like I say, the school has proven to be an excellent neighbor. Look at all the people here in support of it. And I think that we have it within our ability to, to give them the courtesy of allowing them that flexibility. So I would recommend, and I'd be happy to make a motion, supporting the approval of this along with those amendments.
Okay. I'm going to come back to you on those.
Sure.
For a little clarification. Just to tell you where I am, I'm inclined to approve the project. What I'm most pleased about is that I, and I did not realize, is that 116 students come from San Mateo. So we're really educating San Mateo students. Being in the San Mateo City Council, that's super important to me. So that's kind of where I stand with it. It was a big threshold for me, quite frankly. I'm amenable to the 1,000 feet. I, I think you're going to need that flexibility. I'm just not so sure. I'd imagine those buildings may get a single occupancy user fairly soon here. I just don't know. That's kind of my inclination. But is it that you did not want to have a two-year requirement on a leasing of parking spaces? Is that right?
Right. I think that's an unreasonable request.
Got it. Okay.
I totally agree with that.
And you agree with that. And you said 30 extra spaces, though, right?
Yes.
You changed that. And the 1,000 feet, no two years. What, am I getting this right? And then there's a calendar issue.
Questions about something, a couple of things council member, Benia, asked for. So let's say on February 1st, right in the middle of the year, they get a notice that says, sorry, we don't want you guys parking here anymore. Do, does the flexibility that I'm sure that we all would want to give, does that need to be encoded in the, the agreement now? Or could we come back to that time as needed and grant that flexibility then?
So, things can always change. But as the applicant indicated, it's usually July that they know whether or not the agreement's extended for another year. That's summer. But let's say, for example, something unexpected happens in February. Similar to other code enforcement cases, unless there's a clear threat to public health safety, then we normally allow, and I'm not the expert in code enforcement, but we normally allow the applicant, okay, how are you going to remediate the situation? So I think we would be moving forward with the applicant, with the applicant in one of two manners. Number one, what is your proposal to reduce the number of full-time staff? Or B, what alternatives do you have for parking? And let's say it's more than 200 feet, 200 feet away. Let's say it's 1,000 feet. Okay, well, people can walk 1,000 feet. But are there things that can be encouraged to make sure that people do park 1,000 feet away as opposed to somewhere else? So, you know, whether it's a van service, whether it's staggered work hours, things of that nature, I think we would undertake that sort of examination, just like we do in the TOD zone. We say, okay, well, we're allowed reduction in parking, but how are you going to make this thing work? What are the active measures that you're going to take in order to allow the parking to be reduced? So in this case, if we're going to go the opposite and increase the amount of 1,000 feet, 1,200 feet, whatever it winds up being, all right, well, how is that going to work in practicality? How do you get from A to B? What happens if it's raining really hard? I mean, how, how does this work? And so if, in fact, that agreement will be terminated, there are some options. We could come back and amend the, the Q8 overload, overlay zone with, okay, we're going to allow 1,000 feet or whatever. But we're going to include a condition that says A, B, or C, something to encourage and make sure that that parking is utilized. So that's, that's one approach. You could certainly just say, you know, I'm just going to say 1,000 feet tonight. That's, that's the council's call. I would just say, we haven't really done a radius to figure out what's, what's where.
I, I think it might be 1,500 feet. I just don't know. And I don't think we need to do it tonight. They, the school knows that they need to have a Plan B in case they lose their planning. That, and they need to come back within 30 days in order to figure out what that Plan B is. So let's not try to figure that out. Let's wait until that situation arises, and then we can solve their problem then.
I'd like to give them 1,000 feet. I think it's very tenuous up there.
I'm wondering if we can ask the applicant, if we gave them this additional leeway, how would they try to make sure that people park there and get from there to school?
I, I don't need that right now. They're, they're doing just fine right now.
So I, I just to, I agree with Councilmember Gothel's. I would like the staff to, to evaluate this. And, and who knows what's going to happen hopefully a long time from now when this happens? Who knows what the traffic is? Who knows what the parking situation is? Who knows? There's so many unknowns, we can't tell what the future is. Why, why do we make that decision tonight?
Well, maybe then that could be part of the motion, is that we ask staff to do the evaluation and come back within some period of time, and we can look at it. Mr. City Attorney, is that...
I don't think it solves the problem. I don't think it solves the problem to say 1,000 feet.
I think it gives them a fair amount of flexibility.
I do think it sort of solves our problem if I change my mind and go ahead and vote for the 1,000 feet.
Got to be flexible, in many regards. I think it gives them some flexibility. It's pretty tenuous. If they got a landlord that it's not even negotiating with, 30 days out, I mean, you know, let's, let's give them some breathing room here. That's why.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Sure. I would make a motion to, here, I lost my page here. To introduce an ordinance for a zoning code amendment and zoning reclassification from R1B, which is one-family dwellings, to R1B slash Q8, which is one-family dwelling overlay, qualified overlay District 8, and adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and special use permit modification for a property located at 1 Cary School Lane, subject to the conditions of approval as amended. And, as amended, do we have the amendments already? Do I need to say more?
So with respect to the ordinance, which is the introduction of the zoning code amendment, the R1B slash Q8 overlay, that ordinance would be amended to allow, for the provision of off-site parking within 1,000 feet.
Of up to 30 spaces within 1,000 feet.
Required off-street parking. And then we can get into the, the amount of off-street parking would be in the resolution.
Also, that we eliminate condition 10 and replace 52 with the 2012 language.
I think the 2012 language still stays there. It was part of their resolution in 2012 to approve it, so it isn't really being modified. Is that...
Sorry, the only challenge I see with the 2012 language is that it doesn't implement the minimum number of off-site spaces required by the zoning code. So staff would suggest that we modify that number to the minimum, which would be 21 spaces. 30 is what they're providing, but 21 is the minimum.
Okay. Those are the amendments. And along with eliminating existing or proposed condition 10. And that's the motion.
Thank you for your hard work.
51A. 51A stands. And it says what it says. It might need to be eliminated if we're going with the 2012 language.
That's correct. I mean, 51A and B was meant to, to replace the 2012 condition. And 51A, as presented to the planning commission, does, to the planning commission and City Council, does reflect the 21 spaces.
Thank you. So then we would be striking condition 10 and condition 51A, or 52A, whichever one it is.
51A and B is related to off-site parking. And those, that condition is what tells us the number of spaces that are required. So what's before you is the condition as presented to the council and to the commission, which replace the 2012 condition that the applicant had shown in his presentation.
Right. So is this acceptable to the applicant, to this?
This will stand. This is already in existence, 51A and B that you're showing me right now, right?
Right.
That's from 2012. That stays.
Well, it's slightly modified from 2012, but this is what was presented to the commission without changes.
Okay, got it. All right. So there'll be no change to that?
Wait a minute. Could we ask the proponent to step forward and comment on that?
This 21 off-site, special event parking. Doesn't have the two-year in there.
Condition of approval number 10 is the condition with the, the two years.
That's not being entertained at this point.
Yeah, we should strike that one.
But this one stays in effect, correct?
Correct.
With one slight modification, did you say? Or it stays in effect?
I'm not certain that I understand what the change would be. 21 is what's required.
The 1,000 feet for parking?
No, that's part of the ordinance. So I think what we ought to do is ask the applicant if this is acceptable to them.
I believe condition 10 references condition 51, does it not?
As presented to the commission, it does.
Correct.
It has modified, it does not.
So my understanding is, we would do away with 10. And we would love to see 51A go away and be replaced by the 2012 language. Because if you look at number two there, reduce the number of full-time staff, I'm not sure you want us coming to you in a hardship situation saying, we need to lay off staff as a, by virtue of this condition. So we would say, get rid of 10, get rid of 51A, and stay with 2012.
So explain to us what the difference is between what we're looking at and what you see in the 2012 language that you favor.
In the 2012 language, it, it requires us, should we lose...
Could we bring that back up, please?
Should we lose our license agreement at 2,000 Alameda, within 30 days, we have to go to zoning administration to explain the measures we're taking to remedy this issue. So this provides us with some flexibility, that we don't all of a sudden have to go to the threat of reducing staff, which is what 51A has in it, number two. 51A, item two, that's the, the part that we find objectionable.
Okay.
You know, from staff standpoint, I would just say, regardless of what it says in this condition, that's one of the options.
So that's a discretion that the planning office would use?
Well, I, again, I think the basic premise is, is there replacement parking? Is it within 200 feet? If it's not within 200 feet, what's going to be used to encourage its use? Assuming you don't go with 1,000 feet tonight. If you go with 1,000 feet tonight, it's, where's the replacement parking? Or you reduce the, the amount of full-time staff. So, you know, from our standpoint...
I, I would, my, my issue with this language is, if we find ourselves in a situation where they no longer have the parking spaces, all this requires them to do is submit a report. Doesn't require them to provide replacement parking spaces. And so the, the proposed language that was presented by staff to the planning commission originally, provides a fallback to the, to the city. The city's interested in working with them. The city's not interested in putting them out of business. It provides a fallback to the city that if they provide a report, it doesn't do anything. Just a report is, hey, you know, we're going to, every once in a while, not have people show up to work. Okay, how many people? Well, we're, we're not interested in telling you. There's a fallback to us that we can use as leverage to get what we need, which is, you know, those parking spaces.
But I hear Ron saying that, well, the plane department would be able to work with them. And yet, we see, you know, cold, hard language here. Is there some way...
Right. And so it's like, submit a report, an executed agreement, or, you know, reduce the number. So I think that, that, the message is that we get the interest of the council, as long as they're working with us in good faith, we're not going to shut down the school.
So maybe we just take the 30 days out. And, because that's what Ron is kind of saying, is that we're going to work with them.
Well, all, all the 30 days is, is making sure they contact us within 30 days. We don't have to solve the parking problem within 30 days. And, and so I, you know, my recommendation would go, would be to go with the language that's before you. And, the deal with the situation, and they're dealing with us in good faith, and we're trying to work with them in good faith, I think the problem will be taken care of. And if it's not, then they can ask for a modification of the condition. And if they're going through the process of asking for a modification of the condition and coming back to the council, as long as they're going through that process in good faith, I'm not going to be taking them to court.
Right. And, and I think the bigger question is forcing them to reduce staff. We wouldn't go there, as long as they're still working with us.
That's right.
We're not going to force them to do anything. It's their option to be in compliance in one way or the other.
Right.
And they're going to be trying to find the parking. I, Madam Mayor, can I make the motion to approve this item without number 10, with number 51, with the language that's on here? And I believe it's the majority of the council that would go with the 1,000-foot radius. I understand that they might not be able to fit within that 1,000-foot radius. If they lost their parking at 2,000 Alameda, they'd have to come back to us and say 1,500 feet or whatever it is. And they understand that we'll work with them. So, do you understand my motion?
We're going to do all that, just add the 1,000 feet, because it might give them the flexibility they need without coming back to us. If, in fact, I mean, I appreciate your concern over 51A, but I also appreciate that you seem like a very nice man, Mr. Lyon, is that your last name? But somebody may come in after you and just say, we don't really care. So we just want to make sure we have that kind of leverage, as it were. So, we good?
Yeah.
All right. So there's the motion. Do we have a second?
So that I'm clear.
Come again?
So that I'm clear.
It's already happened.
Condition 10 is, is gone.
Yes.
Condition 51 will address that, as originally presented by staff to the planning commission, will be the condition in the resolution, dealing with that issue. And then the ordinance will have the 1,000-foot.
That's right.
That's my motion.
I like that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hall those in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries 4-0. Okay, thank you for your hard work, Ross. It's not easy. Sometimes making, making laws. Okay, so we will move on then. Mr. Lee, are you here? Come on down. Let's talk dollars. Thank you. Grace? Come on in. Don't be afraid.
All right, take your seat.
Good evening. Oh, yes, sorry.
There she is.
Give us one second.
Do we need five minutes?
Welcome back. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Captain, members of the City Council. My name is Grace Castaneda. I'm the budget manager. With me is Rich Lee, our finance director. And the item before you is the proposed 2019 to 20 budget. So I'll go over the budget overview before passing it on to Rich, who will talk about the long-term plan and our general fund. So, a little bit of how we got here on January 22nd, we presented to council our financial update. On March 18th, we held a study session in which we introduced components of the 2019 to 20 proposed budget, along with revenue enhancement options, as well as options in our expenditure lines, particularly our discretionary expenditures. Then on May 20th, we delivered the proposed budget books to council. Tonight is our first public hearing. And June 17th is scheduled to our second public hearing. and June 17th is scheduled to our second public hearing and budget adoption. So a little bit on the budget highlights, 2019 to 20 is the second year of our two-year cycle. So the primary focus is on the capital improvement program, or the CIP. CIP stands at $41.5 million for next year, with a five-year total of $280.7 million. Our citywide operation stands at $191.2 million. So combined with our CIP, that's a total proposed budget at $232.7 million. Next, I'll talk about the general fund summary. General fund is our primary operating fund, makes up about 70% of our total operating budget. And so, similar to what we have introduced during the March study session, we are looking at a shortfall. You can see that the total resources are estimated at $134 million, while the total requirements stand at $137.6 million. So we're looking at a $3.6 million shortfall, and we're budgeting a use of unassigned general fund balance to cover for it. What I want to note here is that the total requirements do include all of our known and assumed resource demands, and that includes all of our discretionary items. So the determination of if and when we'll actually need to draw upon this unassigned fund balance will depend on several factors, which we'll go into detail later in the presentation. And next on the general fund, resources. As you can see from the pie chart, and not surprisingly, property taxes are top revenue funding source at 47%, followed by sales tax, followed by property transfer tax. So those three are our top three revenue sources. That makes up about 70% of the total. So first on property tax, we're estimating that to be increased to 7% for next year. And that's really as a result of our property assessed valuations remaining very strong in our city. Sales tax, we're estimating that to be increased by 1.5%. We've added to this estimate from the internet sales that we'll begin to bring in. So that helps with the revenue source, bring this baseline up a little. However, it really is not still keeping pace with the rate of inflation. Property transfer tax, we're budgeting that at $8.5 million for next year. This is our most volatile revenue source, very susceptible to the ebb and flow of the real estate market. So how we've developed this number is that we took an average of what this revenue source has collected over the long term. This is also how we estimate for this revenue source in our long-term plan, instead of trying to time the market. Next on the general fund requirements. So as you can see from the pie chart, personnel costs make up 51%. Historically, for our general fund, our personnel costs make up about 70%. And so the reason for the difference is that instead of us paying a fire personnel cost, that's now been shifted into a San Mateo consolidated fire contribution cost, which you see in the orange slice at 20%. And San Mateo consolidated fire is primarily consisted of personnel costs. So if you add the two slices together, our trend of 70% in personnel costs remain relatively the same. And speaking of San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, our member agency contribution, which is 60%, is $22.5 million for next year. Our fire legacy costs are costs that remain with the city, that's $4.5 million. So we're looking at a total fire cost of around $27 million. This is $900,000 over what we projected to cost if we were to remain as our own fire department. This is within what we expected, given the additional administrative overhead and a higher pension cost. Also, you know, to maintain the high level of service in our community would have meant adding another fire station and another engine company in the long run, if we were to remain as a standalone fire department. And that carries a much higher cost implication. And so to summarize, the expenditures in the general fund do include all of our known and assumed resource demands, including our discretionary items. And for 2019 to 20, that's $2 million additional to capital, $2.4 million additional pension payment to Calpers, and $1 million to our housing set-aside. Now, loading all of our resource demands in do result in a shortfall, and, you know, we budgeted to draw on the unassigned reserves. But it's important to note that none of the discretionary expenditure items will move forward until after the city's actual review of its actual performance relative to the budget at mid-year next year, when we come back to council. This will give us time and counsel to decide whether to move forward with these discretionary items or to reevaluate them based on the city's financial position at that time. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Rich, who will speak more to the long-term plan.
Good evening, Mayor Pappen, members of the council, Rich Lee, the finance director. My portion of the presentation focuses on the city's long-term sustainability. As Grace noted in her portion for the 1920 budget, that is consistent with what we have incorporated into the city's long-term plan, namely that the current assumptions for the discretionary items, for additional pension funding, support for the capital improvement plan, and the housing set-aside are also incorporated into the 10-year plan. I will also maintain compliance with the city's reserves policy. In addition, the costs related to pension that we know of as of now are also folded into the long-term plan, as well as 2% annual salary increases. All of these competing demands, again, do result in a structural deficit over the long term. We're trying to resolve those through the use of net reductions. So again, net reductions are additional revenues that are above and beyond what we anticipate, as well as additional budgetary savings from the operating budget. However, that's also combined with use of the unassigned fund balance. So in the table before you, in the far-right column is the, your running balance of the unassigned fund balance and the gradual use of it until year 10 of the plan, where we anticipate it will be fully used, absent any action by the council. As well as in the middle column, again, the net reduction or additional revenues or budgetary savings that we anticipate. So in order to address the structural deficit, council directed staff at the last study session to conduct polling on a number of potential tax measures, namely transit occupancy tax, business tax, and potentially property transfer tax. In addition, we're also looking at other options, non-tax-related, specifically billboards, which we're looking at a study session in the near future. As Grace noted, all of the discretionary items mentioned this evening, we won't be moving forward with them until we actually look at how the results perform relative to the budget. This is, the 1920 budget is year two of the two-year business plan. The next business plan will be 2020, 2022, which will begin in earnest in the winter. And that being year one of the plan, the focus is on the operating budget. So we'll be looking to address the structural deficit through additional revenue enhancement, but also through the net deficit, through the net reductions. This evening, we asked that the council take public comments. Following the public comment, we asked that the council provide staff with feedback or any direction. Finally, in two weeks from today, we'll be returning to the council with three resolutions. First is a resolution to approve the 1920 operating budget. Second is a resolution to approve the 2019-24 capital improvement plan. And finally, the third resolution is to approve the 2019-20 GAN appropriations limit. This concludes our presentation. You're happy to answer any questions from council.
Questions? Questions?
You had a slide about how much revenue is growing. You broke it out into individual pieces, the biggest piece being the property taxes, which went up by approximately 7%. Is that right?
That's correct.
But that's only around half, less than half, of our revenue?
Correct. So the property taxes for next year anticipate a total of $64 million. But that is our largest, but it's also only half of our total revenues for the general fund.
I'm just, I just want confirmation that I sort of understand this. Am I correct that revenue's going up, so we're collecting more money in taxes? Our expenses are going up, cost of living increases for employees, budget's going up by maybe 3%, maybe a little bit more than that. But really, what puts us behind is the fact that the unfunded liability is increasing by at least 7% more than that. And so, with that being such a large portion of our budget, we can't catch up, even though our revenues are going up. We're falling deeper in a hole. Is that fair to characterize it?
I'd say that's a fair statement. To quantify that, the last time we presented to the council, specifically on the pensions, the contribution we anticipate to double over a 10-year period. So going from $15 million to essentially $27 million over a 10-year period, assuming all of the current conditions and the investment returns relative to the discount rate with Calpers.
And so, we as a council are trying, have to make decisions that are going to accommodate that, because we're either going to have to cut services or raise more revenue. And what you just showed us in the slide for next steps was increasing revenue through certain specific areas. But if we don't do that, and if we don't do it enough, we're going to have to cut services.
And if I, what I think I failed to do was to elaborate a bit on the next business plans in the next two-year period. In addition to the potential revenue enhancements, there's also taking a hard look at the operating budget to see where there are potential savings to be had.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I think I took too much time, but I...
It's all good.
Thank you.
But it is that you want to see where those revenue enhancements are going to leave us by next year or so, before we decide whether we'll pay Calpers more money?
Correct. So I believe the plan is, and our city manager's office is leading the effort, but to have the polling conducted in the early part of 2020, and that will inform staff in the council on which direction we should head.
I see.
I just wanted to add, you didn't mention the set-asides, I didn't think I heard, but those are in the, on the table too, right? To reevaluate those, and that's going to be some more tough decisions as well.
Correct. To be specific, the housing set-aside, we anticipate in the 1920 budget to set aside $1 million. That's within the general fund. That will bring the balance from $5 billion, which we anticipate to be the ending balance for the current fiscal year, to $6 million, ending fiscal year 20.
Great, thanks.
Questions?
Sure.
Yeah. I think I saw a number of like $950,000 cost increase in our fire services since the consolidated San Mateo Fire Department has been implemented. Was that correct?
That is correct. There was a fiscal analysis that was performed prior to the formation of SMC Fire, and that was anticipated that that would be the result of the formation. So it was, in other words, it's within expectations that that was going to happen.
Okay, I thought one of the reasons we did it was to cut overhead costs. We did cut overhead, actually, in terms of numbers of people in command. Wasn't that correct?
So, the cost for consolidated, I think we've been reporting that we expected it to cost about $1 million to $1.5 million more than retaining a standalone fire department. But the standalone fire department wasn't sustainable from an administrative perspective. And also, the $900,000 is in comparison to the existing baseline of just San Mateo Fire. But it doesn't consider the growth that would have really necessitated to maintain service levels with a standalone fire department and entirely new engine company. So it's certainly less expensive than that option. So this is, as noted, well within the expectation of what it would cost. But with additional finance services and HR services and additional pension costs, the $900,000 was a number that we expected.
Okay, good, thanks. Other question? 2% salary increase that you were showing, projections, 2% salary increases? Well, I'm questioning that, because I see that the CPI this year is 4%. Is that, does that sound right?
You're correct. The CPI is close to 4%. That has been the city's practice in the long-term projection to assume 2% salary increases with the...
So those aren't really salary increases, because they don't keep up with the cost of living, right?
And that is the assumption that we're using to control, we're really competing against other demands, one of them being the pension costs.
Right. So I understand part of what we need to do is increase revenues, and we've been talking about that, and you showed some of the ideas, you expressed some of the ideas. And I'm wondering, there seems like there's a couple of things that we haven't looked at, and maybe we discussed this earlier. But I know that some places tax services. And as we go into the future, I think we should look at, this might need to be done on a statewide basis, but I think we should think about talking with our legislators, if that's the case, about finding a way to tax services, because there's certainly a lot of service going on.
And that has been an ongoing effort through certain state senators to broaden the tax base, the sales tax base, to tax services. So it's certainly ongoing efforts at the state level.
Okay, good. Then one last thing. Earlier in our study session, we had a representative from Peninsula Clean Energy, and he mentioned that, well, over the last year, our local ratepayers for electricity have saved $18 million, right? And he projected that in the not-too-distant future, they're going to be saving on the average of about $50 million a year in fuel costs, right, when we, as we convert to EVs. So that's money that will be newly disposable income, that I think we should look at trying to focusing on how can we capture that here? Residents won't have to pay it for fuel, so how can we work with residents, convince them that maybe instead of shopping online, they should take some way that we can focus on trying to get that money to be spent here locally? I think that's an idea worth considering.
And that is one of the areas that our sales tax consultant reports on, is the capture rate. So of the expected transactions that are occurring for San Mateo residents, how much of those dollars are San Mateo actually capturing relative to other cities?
Right. So where we see forecasted increase in available funds, we should focus on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? So we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any speaker slips? Why is it when it comes to numbers, people don't... We'll bring it back to the council. And this comes to us another time. You don't need a vote tonight, is that right?
On 17th?
You'll go rob a bank in the interim, and things will be fine?
We will return in two weeks' time.
Thank you very much for your informative presentation.
Thank you.
Do not rob a bank?
Dude, I said, "Do not rob a bank."
All right. So let us go on to the next item of business, which is property owner obligations with respect to tenants displaced from unsafe or substandard units, item 22. Ordinance introduction. Ms. Silvettini, come on down.
I said, "Don't rob a bank."
We're here waiting with bated breath.
We're here tonight again regarding the property owner obligations with respect to tenants displaced from substandard or unsafe units. So the purpose of this ordinance is, or the purpose of this tonight is an ordinance introduction that requires landlords to pay benefits when substandard conditions exist that endanger the tenants and to expand on the benefits provided by state law. At the council study session on April 1st, 2019, council provided specific directions to staff, what should be modified from the county ordinance and what should remain. The staff made some of the following modifications to the proposed ordinance. We drafted the ordinance, and then we shared it with interested parties such as CAA, One San Mateo, HLC, Samkar, Peninsula for Everyone, and some landlords who expressed interest. We did hear back from some of the interested parties, and based on some of that feedback... This is not the right slide, I'm sorry. Is there another one in there? Is there another one in there? Sorry.
This is not your item? Or is this a different version?
Yeah.
New one?
22. So as I was saying, based on some of the comments that we got back from some of the interested parties, here's the, so what we did was we went back and we said, this is what we heard from council on the April 1st study session, was that the direction was to make the tenants whole. This language was applied to both the permanent and temporary displacement payments, which was less than, so that the displacement payment would be less the actual rent the tenant household would have paid for the dwelling or room at the time of displacement. After reviewing state law and the draft ordinance, it's clear that the tenants who are permanently displaced would receive less benefits than would be received by utilizing state law. Therefore, staff recommends that permanent displacement payments to be the full three times fair market rate so that it expands on state law. Also, we would like to have this three full time, I'm sorry, three times full market rate for all permanent displacement requirements throughout the code. So an example of this, because it's very hard to follow sometimes just in writing it, so what we're saying is the permanent displacement would be three times the fair market rate, according to HUD, and the $1,000 for the actual moving cost is what, same as the county has. What that looks like is the fair market rate for one-bedroom currently in San Mateo County is $2,561. So the benefit would be 2,561 times three plus the thousand for a total of $8,638 for a permanent displacement from a one-bedroom unit.
Through the mayor, can I ask a question? When would that be payable?
I'm sorry?
When would that be payable?
I believe the timeline is in the ordinance.
Good evening, council members. Kai Wariano, Assistant City Attorney. Relocation assistance payments are due either 10 days before the specified vacation date, so whenever it is they're told to get out, or if it's less than 10 days, then, immediately.
Okay. So then they have the money to use to actually move?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So then the temporary displacement is where it becomes a little hard to read. So what we tried to do was put it out into actual terms here so that everybody could understand it. So if you had temporary displacement of three days, the payment would be actual and reasonable moving costs. The receipts of those moving costs would be provided by the tenant to the landlord. Temporary housing accommodations, such as a hotel or motel, less the actual rent the tenant would have paid, and the living stipend if applicable. The next slide will show you the applicability of the living stipend. So if a tenant currently pays $3,000 a month, you would divide that up by the amount of days, so that'd be $100 per day. If the hotel costs were $200 per day, then the landlord would pay the additional $100 per day to make the tenant whole, plus the moving costs as provided by the tenant receipts. That would equal the amount of the tenant, of the temporary payment if the displacement were for three days. An example of temporary displacement for up to three months, say the tenant's current rent was $3,000 a month, and the temporary housing cost was $3,500 a month, the landlord would pay the additional $500 per month and the moving costs and the stipend if it were applicable. So it would be $500 times three plus the moving cost equal the payment amount. And the reason for the temporary not being the full benefit is because it's not a get-out-and-go-find-a-place. It's, and so the idea is that the tenant would not be paying their full rent, and the landlord should make them whole if it goes above and beyond.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What if the temporary housing cost is less than the person's current rent? How's that work? I mean, let's say your rent's $4,000 a month, and you get temporary housing at $3,500 a month. It is that the landlord ends up paying nothing, but your moving costs, obviously. And if it's not a comparable, which I know you'll show me on the next slide, but that's, I have that right, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So the living stipend for temporary displacement, so the stipend applies if temporary housing are not comparable in size, condition, or amenities, are not located within San Mateo city limits or a jurisdiction that borders San Mateo, the amount of the stipend is 50% of the current U.S. General Services Administration for meals and incidents per diem. For San Mateo Foster City in Belmont, per tenant household member per day not to exceed $1,000 per tenant household. The current GSA rate for meals and incidentals per diem is $66 per day. Therefore, the proposed living stipend would be $33 per tenant household member per day not to exceed $1,000 per tenant household. So the other changes in the ordinance from the counties are the appeals process, the council has chosen to hear the appeals, the anti-retaliation section is, the proposed ordinance is the same conduct as specified in Civil Code 1940.2. Private right of action, a tenant household shall have the right to file a lawsuit against property owner to enforce its rights under the ordinance, and if the property owner is found to have willfully violated its payment obligation, then the property owner is subject to treble damages. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Yeah, I need a clarification. If we can go back to the living stipend. So when I read the staff report, I went back to watch the April 1st meeting where we talked about the stipend and who would be eligible, and the way, from what I saw and what I remembered, it was adults, not every member of the household.
Dad, so my notes, and I did re-watch the study session, and we did not eliminate the children for the meal stipend. You guys spoke about eliminating children for any mileage stipend, but we didn't include a mileage stipend. We made it a meals and incidentals.
So the stipend, we're talking, is just that, so there's not going to be any transportation or any...
It's simpler to just make it the meals and incidentals and then tie it to the GSA rate so that it flexes up and down
Okay.
with the economy.
Okay, all right.
And then that gets away from, you know, because we tried to keep them within the area that's acceptable for...
Okay. So I just wanted clarification. We're not including, okay. All right. Thank you.
Quick question. I was trying to find in the ordinance, and my apologies if I didn't find it, I was trying to search through it, how a tenant household member is defined.
Okay. So the tenant household is defined on page five of the...
No, I got how the household was, but did that also define what a household member is, or are they one in the same?
So the discussion that you had, we had at the last council meeting, it was the council decided that council will be the trier of fact, based on the evidence of who the, how the tenant are at the time. And I believe the topic of discussion was not everyone has a lease, therefore, they can be living there, and they would be required to provide evidence such as the landlord accepted a payment from them, they had an email from the landlord saying, we know you live there, something to that effect, and at the time, the council stated that they were comfortable in making that determination as those conditions arise.
Just to add to that, it's based on those who shared living expenses, which is a common definition for family, you know, a common household. So it is very consistent throughout.
Did you have questions? Councilmember Benia?
You have a question regarding the temporary displacement, which requires only payment of the difference. So like in the example you described, it's $500 a month, right? So I'm sorry, I guess my member, my memory is escaping me, and I did not go back and watch the meeting, so I apologize for that. But I don't remember really going so far as, because the reason I bring this up is because I know that business people always look at how they're going to make the most money, and if they caught with something, how much is it going to cost them to cure that, right? And quite often, I have, in my career, business owners making decisions where, okay, I can do this, and if I get caught so well, I'll have to pay back whatever they catch me for, right? But no more. And I wonder where the incentive is, really, this kind of, previously, they were just paying the rent, right? And I think, is that what the county ordinance said, that they just pay the rent? The landlords don't pay rent while they're displaced because it was not their fault? I mean, the tenants don't pay rent while they're displaced because it was not their fault. So I wonder where the incentive is. It's been greatly reduced, I think, in this change, for them to maintain their place decently, knowing that, number one, most people don't complain. And when they do complain, okay, so they got caught for that, and they'll have to go through and make some things. But it's only going to cost them a few bucks a month, right? So I just, I'm not clear on how we got there. Can you, can you kind of explain that? Because in my book, I think some of them will figure it's cheaper to neglect it and pay the costs while deciding what to do about it.
So the discussion went around about, we want to provide assistance to the tenants who are displaced. The permanent displacement is easily figured out.
Yeah, right.
The temporary displacement, the discussion was, we want to make the tenants, we want to let them have assistance, but the council said they didn't want them to have, what I recall saying, a windfall, or, you know, a lot. So it was discussed that the tenants are not paying rent while they're displaced, so therefore, they have their rent, and then anything above that is what the landlord should pay for temporary. We do have other sections of the Muni Code that we, other provisions that we use for enforcement and punitive measures that go along with the repairs of the building. So if you were looking for other punitive things, there are other avenues. But the discussion at the time was, we wanted to provide assistance to the tenants, but not create a windfall. Those were the words that were used.
And also to add to that, code enforcement costs, city attorney costs associated with, you know, abating a violation, which would be a cause of, you know, determining a substandard condition, are all cost recovery. So the landlord or whoever is causing these issues would have to pay for city staff costs, time and materials as well, so that's also a penalty, as well as paying building permit penalty fees if things are constructed without permits. So this is just the relocation benefit. There are other charges against the violator based on what's happening on-site.
Mm-hmm.
My experience, when you have a condition that is the substandard nature that we're discussing here, there's a lot more that goes into than just a simple fix. There are very costly permits, there are standards that have to be applied to, they're going to have to follow the code to get it done right, they can't do it backdoor the way that it's probably been done. So there's, there's a lot of measures there that we follow.
Right. I mean, one of the concerns I have is that, for instance, at 314 East Poplar, when that happened, the tenants were already paying upwards of $3,000 a month for the smallest two-bedroom units I ever saw. And to move them to another place, and, I mean, it's possible that they would receive nothing but a place to live. And I think that they've been suffering in these conditions that they didn't, that they didn't cause, right? And some would say, well, they could have moved, but they're struggling just to pay that. And places aren't exactly readily available here, places that people can afford, right? So we have a tough situation here, where I think it would behoove us to figure out some sort of way to help people who have been subjected to really egregious conditions in some cases, to be able to relocate in case they decide they don't want to go back to that place.
So in the case of Poplar, which you're discussing, the longest relocation was three days, and the landlord did pay for their relocation hotel, and then they were able to move back in. For temporary, I don't know, however you want to do it, that seemed to capture the conversations that we heard at the last study session.
Yeah. From what I understood in talking with one of the tenants, the fumigation treatments actually went on for about a month because they couldn't completely eliminate the bedbugs.
I understand that.
The people continued to be inconvenienced, they continued to need to actually go out and somehow treat all of their clothing and linens, their bedding and everything else. This is a sign that the landlord really didn't care about putting the full effort into doing what needed to be done.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That only one unit, though, was applicable to this particular, only one of the units would have been involved in this type of red tagging. The rest of them were done under property maintenance, so it wasn't the same scenario that we have in this ordinance.
Yeah, when I toured the building, I saw the infestations in many units. Okay. Well, I think that's something we need to think about.
Well, I would just say, I totally appreciate what you're saying. If a place isn't habitable, there are rights to not pay rent as well. So I, this is probably what we're trying to do within the confines of a city ordinance as it relates to a lack of habitability. But there are other remedies as well in the law that a tenant could conceivably seek out. That's why they have legal aid that can help them, you know, process this through the courts as well. I know it's not an easy process, it's a cumbersome process, but, I mean, we've been working on this for a while now, and I think we've kind of whittled it down to what is manageable, at least from the city perspective, on enforcing something against the landlord in the event somebody really does get fully displaced. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that there's other remedies of law that people can follow too. So, I mean, there's not so much we can do at the city level. All right, other questions? A public comment? We'll open it. I don't want to rush anybody. Everyone's good? Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two speakers. First speaker is Roee Lynn Antonio, and second speaker is Elaine Gilbrecht.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, how many did you say you had? I wasn't...
Or more now.
Okay. If you could tell me how many in total?
Five now.
Five in total. Five in total, five in total, going once, going twice.
Can we limit it?
Six, Jordan Grimes. If you don't get down here faster, it's only going to be five. Okay, I like the hustle. Thank you, sir.
Could we limit it to only 20 minutes per speaker?
So we'll go, what do you, what do you got, three minutes? Is that acceptable for everyone? Okay. Ms. Lynn Antonio, can you whip it out, I mean, whip out your statement in three minutes?
Yes, of course. Good evening.
The hour is late. Let's just go with it. Rewind.
And I'm mayor and city council, city staff. My name is Roee Lynn Antonio with the California Apartment Association. I want to thank the city again and staff for taking the time to really write this ordinance and listen to all feedback from stakeholders. My comment tonight is going to focus strictly on compliance and offering clarity, not the merit of the proposal. On the definitions for tenant household, we are still requesting for this to be a little bit tighter and hoping to make the definition to for tenant household to clarify exactly who the payment goes to. So if we could have it where the tenant household is the names of the, those are included in the, on the... So if we could have it where the tenant household is the names of the, those are included on the lease, that would make it easier from a practical perspective. So for the owner who needs to pay the relocation payment, they actually know who to write the check out to. So strictly for that purpose. And on the discussions regarding lease, everybody seems to be on a lease. It's either you're on a fixed-term lease or a month-to-month lease. So a lease is a lease, is what we're trying to say. Second thing, second request is on section 7.50 dot 050. It would be helpful if the city were to create the form for the owners to use for the noticing. It's just, it makes it more consistent and easier for owners to comply if the city were to create the form instead. And then on the appeals process, under section 7.50 point 100, we are asking for more than 10 days for the appeal. Here's why. Currently, right now, it's, it's 10 days from when the notice is written, but you have to account, there's about five days of mailing. So if we could add more than 10 days, it would allow for the owners to actually get in touch with their council to consult on how to respond to the citation and also how to respond to the appeal. And also for the advancing the relocation payment on behalf of the property owner, if you can just make it very clear that before this is done, that the owner knows the city is about to do this action, just so that way, the owner also has an opportunity to appeal it and to ask questions and find different avenues to work with the city to make sure that the payment that's going to the tenant is actually justified. Aside from that, we feel like this ordinance is a significant improvement and change from the previous versions that we've seen. So I do want to say thank you again to staff, and please just be open to potential language cleanups as you look through implementing this ordinance. And we are here, as always, as a resource. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elaine Gilbrecht, followed by Esther Conrad, and then Carol Eldridge.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name's Elaine Gilbrecht, and I'm the executive officer from SAMCAR, the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. And in section 7.50 point 020, again, like Roevee just said, the tenant household, we'd like to add the words in there that it means one or more individuals on the owner's lease. That needs to be tightened up a little bit. As a property owner myself, I also want to say that would clarify it for me. And also, the second thing I want to say is 7.50 point 120, private right of action. SAMCAR would like to go on record that we would like that part eliminated. Those are my comments. And I do want to thank you for the significant changes already made in this. We appreciate you listening to us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Esther Conrad, followed by Carol Eldridge, and then Karen Camacho.
Good evening. Thank you very much for all the work that the council and also the staff has put into this ordinance. I know it's been a long road, and we're really pleased to see this city take, take this step. I have a very specific comment about the temporary displacement provision, 7.5 point So while, while we would love to see as, as much support as possible for tenants who are temporarily displaced, and really appreciate Councilmember Bonilla's point about the need for additional, additional support for those tenants, just working with the language that you have right now, which says you will pay actual costs, as per the example in the slide, I think there's an issue with the last sentence in point number one under temporary displacement. And that sentence sets a limit on how much actual costs can be paid. The sentence reads, "Temporary housing accommodation costs shall not exceed the current monthly U.S. Department HUD fair market rent for a unit of comparable size," and et cetera. But it doesn't say anything about, is that prorated? You assume that that's prorated, right? But if, because it doesn't say that there's, for what period of time? It just says the HUD mark fair market rent. So assume that it's prorated. That means that you're saying the upper limit that can be paid on a temporary displacement is effectively $100 a day on a $3,000 apartment. So that would be the, maybe a two-bedroom apartment. Then that would limit you to paying $100 a day, rather than, as compared to the example that was given, which said that there would be flexibility to pay $200, for example, for a hotel per night, if you were having a short displacement. So if you compare this to what the county says, the county has this, you know, very similar language, this temporary displacement provision, but it allows, it says the upper limit is three months of HUD fair market rate. But you don't have in here three months, you just have a general statement about the current monthly rate. So I just suggest looking into that language because it, it seems to limit you to only paying effectively $100 a day on a $3,000 rent. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Carol Eldridge, followed by Karen Camacho, and then Jordan Grimes.
Good evening. My name is Carol Eldridge, and I too want to thank you for the considerable time and attention that has gone into trying to get this ordinance to the altar. And I want to express special appreciation for the fact that you did retain the private right of action with the, the troubled damages. So, you know, I think that it sends to the community a very strong message that this council will not tolerate the kind of egregious abuse that happened at 314 East Poplar and recurred at Casa de Campo, Casa de Campo complex in San Mateo. So I, I want to add to what Esther was saying, because I think that that language is confusing. I have read it over many times this afternoon, and I've read it different ways. What I am hoping it means is what Christine illustrated in the slide, which is that the total outlay on the landlord's part will not exceed the fair market rent. Is that what it means? That the total outlay by the landlord will not exceed that? Okay, because if that's the case, then, then I, you know, and that is in accord with what the slide said, then that would make sense to me. But, I mean, this whole discussion has been very, you know, confusing from the get-go, and the language, you know, it's like trying to parse it is just really difficult. But I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, and assuming that that is the case, that that is what is intended, then I have nothing but thanks for your efforts. Thank you.
Karen Camacho, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Karen Camacho, and on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, I would like to thank you for your attention to this ordinance. As an organization that works with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality, affordable homes in San Mateo County, we pride ourselves in being in a community that upholds high standards of decency, where everyone has a right to even safe, sanitary, and decent housing. And consider Jane's story for a moment, and I've changed her name to protect her identity. She is a single mother of two, who also takes care of her elderly father. We met her while canvassing and talking to residents about affordability, and her apartment had open electric wiring hanging in the, in different directions, including in front of a roof gutter where water could pass over the wires. The window was broken and covered with plastic and, and painter's tape. Her family wouldn't go on record, afraid of losing their home. Now imagine that Jane finally decides to speak up about her living conditions and her landlord's negligent behavior. This ordinance will help support her family so that they don't have to make the decision to live, live in the car or on the street. I do want to point out something in the draft ordinance that was a bit confusing. It seems to be a more diluted policy for residents who are permanently displaced and/or impacted by condo conversions. So if there could be clarity by staff that those edits have been removed, that would be really great. And just a reminder, please continue to be mindful of your original intent and of the negative impacts that passing a diluted policy like that would have. So thank you so much for ensuring the city continues to uphold its values of diversity, inclusion, and decency. Thank you.
And Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is mostly just thanks. I really appreciate all the hard work of both yourselves and staff over the last, I think we're at a half dozen meetings now since September. So I appreciate all the hours and hours that all of you here have put into this. I did just want, I also wanted to acknowledge Councilman Bonilla's point earlier about how difficult it is to find housing here. My partner and I have been apartment hunting for the last few weeks, and it is even more difficult than last time we did this. There's very few units on the market, and when you go to an open house, there's between 15 and 30 people there usually, at least, the ones that we've gone to. So it, it really is difficult to find housing in the area. I appreciate that being taken into account with this ordinance, with the potential perdeems that are, that are granted to people who are relocated, you know, a little bit further away. So I wanted to say thank you for that, and again, thank you for all your hard work. It's much appreciated.
I have no other speakers left.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council. Were there any follow-up questions?
Just to follow up on some of the comments that were made by folks, but...
Go ahead.
So there was one comment about, can the city create the notice form? Is that something within our purview to do?
I'd have to reread it, but I believe that section says that any notice the landlord gives, they need to provide to the city. Is that correct?
We can work on a, on a form that, that we recommend that folks use. If they don't want to use it, as long as what they provide meets the requirements of law, that's fine. But we can work on a, a form for use as a, a matter of customer service.
Another comment was about the appeal time. I don't know what, staff has any thoughts about changing that?
I, I actually had the opportunity to speak with Roevee on Friday afternoon.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, I, I had the opportunity to speak with Roevee on, on Friday afternoon about this. The time to lodge a written appeal is 10 days from the time a property owner receives notice that they have to pay relocation assistance. We think that, we being staff, think that this is a reasonable amount of time, given as a practical matter, this is not the first time they are hearing from the city. So they will have initially received a warning letter from code enforcement, they will have received a notice of correction from code enforcement, they will have, hopefully, complied by that point. But if they haven't, odds are they've received other informal communications from code enforcement. And, you know, as a, as a additional point of fact, the code enforcement officers are very diligent about making sure they are providing communications to the property owner or whomever the responsible party is, a property manager, what have you. So there are multiple communications that go out from the city, leading up to this final notice saying, "We had to vacate your property. As a result, you are obligated to provide your tenants assistance." So this 10-day period is, is not the only time that they will have had to take this up. And furthermore, there, there are appeals available to them for all the previous notices as well. So if they're saying, "No, the violation you're saying exists doesn't exist on my property," they can appeal that, you know, in the first instance, as opposed to having to let the condition linger to the point where we, we are issuing notices to vacate. So our, our recommendation for a 10-day appeal process for this particular obligation under municipal code is based on, on that practical reality as well.
Can I ask you, how are you transmitting that notice? The 10-day notice?
So I believe, and Christine can, can tell me, we can, can maybe provide particulars on the process, but we typically mail it, email it, and post it physically on the property.
Okay. Got it.
Question on that?
Yes.
I seem to remember that with the Poplar building, there was some difficulty gaining access to the interior of the building to inspect and look for the actual violations. Seems like that's pushing out the timeline while people continue to live in these conditions. How do we treat that?
Code enforcement had no problem getting in once it came to our attention.
Okay. So could a landlord say, "No, I'm not letting you in"?
They could, and we've had that in the past, and we work with the city attorney's office to quickly obtain an inspection warrant.
Okay. See not, Sean nodding his head. Okay.
Answered correctly.
Yeah. I want to address also a couple of the items that were brought up. The private right of action is, I mean, I think we changed it from, it was broader, and now it's been narrowed. Is that correct?
Yes, as originally proposed, it was allowed any interested party. Now it's limited to the tenant household.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the stipend for the, those who are displaced outside of our radius or our cities borders, I would be concerned if, if the stipend was not being provided for kids because kids don't eat free. This is not Denny's at home. So I, I would like to see, huh?
I think we are providing for that. Correct.
Okay, good.
You know, he was, their public comment was saying that, but he's saying.
Okay, and regarding some comments about who is a household member, and I think some people were saying just those who are on the lease. But what I also have observed is that some landlords know there are more than the people who are on the lease in the place, and they actually charge accordingly, right? But then, in the end, if we allow them to only consider the household as those who are on the lease, and I know this is hard to define, okay? But there have been more people paying rent, right? Is there some way we could work to try and verify exactly how many people really live there and are paying rent? Because some of the places that I saw were paying, people were paying very high rent, and they actually had some roommates in there. I know that, I saw them.
So we left the definition very open and leave it up to the council to determine...
So that's one of the things that would come back to the council, the trial of fact.
Correct, yes.
Right, and, and so just to elaborate on that point, tenant household is significant in that it, it informs...
Doesn't limit to those on the lease.
Well, as defined, right. It is not, it's not limited to individuals named on the lease. It says individuals who rent or lease a dwelling or room as their primary residence and who share living expenses. But in terms of the relocation assistance that the ordinance requires, there is two components, right? There is the housing component, which is paid on a per-household basis, so, or a per-unit basis, really, is, is a better way to put it. And then, if you're talking about the question of, well, who's part of this household, from a dollars perspective, the only way that materializes is who gets the living stipend. And that is capped at $1,000, and it's $33 per person per day, subject to the, the evidence that this household provides as to who is the household, so...
So three people by 10 days, and you've used it.
Right. Right. And so, and it's, it's also not unimaginable to think of a household that has grown in the time... time that someone has signed a lease, right? And there are more than one household. You know, an elderly parent could come and stay with a couple. A couple could have children. Those individuals would not necessarily be named on the lease, but I think they would be considered part of the tenant household for the purposes of who would be eligible for the living stipend.
Thank you.
But the crux of the assistance, the housing costs, that's paid out on a dwelling or unit basis.
So, quick question. Are we providing notice to the landlord when we intend to step up and pay the relocation expenses? And what's the timeframe on that? I was trying to see it as we were talking.
So the operative provisions of the ordinance are 7.50070. And the notice is that first paragraph, A. And in terms of what the city does prior to advancing those relocation assistance payments, take a look at the second half of the paragraph where it talks about, "Prior to any city payment to a tenant household, the director, the community development director shall make a determination regarding the eligibility of the tenant household for relocation payments. The department will make reasonable efforts to contact a representative of the property owner prior to making the determination or authorizing the city's payments." And so you have additional steps that we will take to essentially inform the property owner that not only has, have we ordered the property vacated, and we've determined that relocation assistance is appropriate, that we're also thinking about advancing the payments on their behalf. So there's, again, additional communications from the city to the property owner about their obligations.
So if you can't reach them, you're still going to pay it, and that's not going to excuse the obligation to repay the city. I follow you there? Because that last sentence says, however, failure to give prior notice to the property owner shall not relieve the property owner of any obligations under this chapter, right? But if the property owner thinks that you, the city didn't, shouldn't have paid, for whatever reason, and I know this is a long process to even get to that point, I get it, then the property owner could appeal the city's payment of those relocation costs.
Yes.
And what if the city improperly paid them? They won't get the money back, right?
Probably not.
It was just our failure to exercise good judgment or whatever. All right. Okay. I just want to make sure I kind of was following that process. The hour is late, but I think I have it. Were you going to add something? No? No, no? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
One item I had, I know one of the commenters was talking about adding something where the actual payment would go to those on the lease. Did you guys look into that and weigh the pros and cons of that?
I think we did talk about it, and there is a provision of the ordinance that talks about any... There we go.
You guys see one another?
Yes. So that when the owner is providing the relocation assistance to the household, that they also provide a copy of that to the city. And so I think at that point, you know, there will be some checks and balances on the part of the city staff. The people that they've been working with on the code enforcement and the complaints and things like that are, in fact, the folks who are eventually receiving that relocation assistance. I think it's a little bit difficult to, well, it's not difficult, it is the Council's prerogative. If you want to write into the ordinance that the relocation assistance be paid or remitted to the leaseholder, you could do that. Again, you do potentially run into some problems about, you know, making sure that that assistance is distributed fairly among the household. I personally would not have an interest in sort of getting in the middle of that, but that is one way to get over that potential logistical issue, is just write that into the ordinance. As drafted, that's not how it reads.
And we did discuss it too, and there are situations where people are, don't have a lease, they just occupy on a month-to-month basis without a lease.
So they're kind of effectively on the lease, but not officially. And if they're two roommates that don't like each other, one person gets a check and doesn't decide to want to run off with the check and not give it to the person being...
Those are the situations where we would be hesitant to intervene, yes.
Let me throw one thing out at you, and I don't know, you might want to stay more flexible if you will be the trier of fact ultimately, but, you know, you may want to have a minimum, you know, the person had to at least live there for 30 days. I don't know. I just throw that out to you. You don't have to have it.
Could you say that again, please?
Whoever this tenant may be, and they may not be on the lease, or you may have acquired a roommate along the way for a short period of time. I mean, it may be that they had to live there for a minimum of 30 days. That way, it can't be just your friend who couch-surfed...
Right.
...fortuitously for the three nights leading up to the uninhabitable condition. You know what I mean? So I don't know, I throw that out to you.
So must have inhabited for a minimum of 30 days.
Yeah. I don't know how you prove that if they're never on the lease, you know? But anyway, I throw it out to you. You ready to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the ordinance as drafted.
Do we have a second?
For clarification, there was the removal of the, on the permanent displacement, of the subtraction of the...
Removal of the change that we made that says less the actual rent the tenant household would have paid for the dwelling or room at the time of displacement. We want to take that out.
With that one, yes. In both this ordinance and the condo conversions, and any subsequent change that was made.
With that...
Why are we taking it out? Sorry, I didn't follow that.
So that the permanent displacement benefit is three months, the full fair market rent, as opposed to just making them whole for those three months, for permanent displacement?
Just only for permanent, you're taking it out? I can live with that. You making that motion? You got a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
So I want to add a comment to that. I want everybody to know that we have not taken this lightly. Clearly, you can see by the number of meetings we had, the number of hours that we and staff have spent on this, it has not been easy to get to this place. It's a compromise, and I think that it's, the Council recognized that there was a vulnerable population who had had some difficulties, and we sought, us being responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of all of the residents of San Mateo, to find a way to bridge that gap somehow. So I thank you for your patience.
And you can stick around for the Climate Action Plan if you want to.
And here's to hardly ever using that ordinance. That's what I say. Okay, Ms. Chow, it is your time yet again this evening. How much time do you need?
How much time do I have?
I appreciate your hanging out.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the Sustainability Analyst with the City Manager's Office. I have tonight an informational update on our Climate Action Plan, providing an update on the progress we've made on the implementation. So the city's Climate Action Plan was adopted in April 2015, and this plan really serves as a comprehensive strategy and roadmap for how to reduce our community's greenhouse gas emissions. The city developed the initial Climate Action Plan in collaboration with city staff, agency partners, and the public. And in 2015, the Sustainability Commission provided input, reviewed, and approved all of the measures, and then recommended actions that were included in the Climate Action Plan. It's similar to the process that we're going through right now with our Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission to update this Climate Action Plan. As part of the adoption process, staff committed to making annual progress reports to the city council and to the commission, and so I'm here today to present our progress on our 28 adopted Climate Action Plan measures. We've made progress on 24 of the adopted measures, and the attachments to the administrative report included a qualitative analysis of progress on all of those measures and some key metrics called out, so that you could see how our implementation has been moving. So our Climate Action Plan is organized into different categories focused on renewable energy, energy efficiency, municipal energy efficiency, alternative fuels, alternative transportation, water and wastewater, and off-road equipment. Each of these measures has a list of recommended actions that represent means of achieving the measure, but they're not necessarily a prescriptive path for implementation. So the list of recommended actions for each measure is included as well as part of the status update of each of our Climate Action Plan. Overall, I just had a few key highlights to share with you to show the work that's been done over this past year. A lot has been done around energy efficiency in our municipal facilities. The city entered into a contract with PG&E for our Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Project that includes energy retrofits at most all of our city facilities. This is a $3.2 million project that includes upgrades to our city hall, our corp yard, libraries, police department, fire station, our parking garages, and our recreation facilities. These improvements include interior and exterior lighting upgrades, replacement of mechanical systems, and implementation of integrating building control strategies. So this work began in August of 2018, and so we're well into it, but this work will continue through 2020. The city was also awarded grant funding of $50,000 from San Mateo County Energy Watch last year during their call for projects to fund small building lighting upgrades. So while our Large Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program focused on our bigger facilities, this lighting upgrade project focused on all of our smaller recreation facilities like park bathrooms that all have lighting that stay on a lot. So lighting upgrades were completed at 15 park facilities, and this included restrooms and storage sheds. We're also excited to highlight some of the energy efficiency programs that are available to the public. This includes home upgrade rebates for single-family property owners. 96 rebates have been paid out. We've seen 15 multifamily properties go through our multifamily energy upgrade program. That means 905 units have benefited from energy efficiency upgrades. The Energy Savings Assistance Program, which focuses on lower-income households, has served 434 units. At San Mateo County Energy Watch, they provide free energy efficiency audits for businesses, and 68 businesses in San Mateo have gone through that program. And then finally, another PG&E program, Home Intel, has 77 residents registered for an energy audit to identify more opportunities to save in your home. This past year, the city installed six Level 2 electric vehicle charging ports at our corp yard. This is excellent timing, because we also received the city library's new all-electric outreach fan, which is featured on the slide. And then throughout San Mateo, I took a look, we have 102 EV chargers available at 21 different locations throughout our community. A greenhouse gas emissions inventory is a summary of our GHG emissions occurring as a result of activities taking place in the city of San Mateo. So this inventory reflects all sorts of activities, including the use of electricity and natural gas in our homes and businesses, emissions from fossil fuel-dependent vehicles, and even the emissions from waste sent to our landfills. As part of our Climate Action Plan update, we started with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for 2017, and we found that we had already reduced our emissions 18% below our 2005 baseline. So if you follow the trajectory here, so the first number is our base, 2005 baseline, 660,000, and now we are 18% below that 2005 baseline, according to our analysis of 2017. So this actually puts the city ahead of a schedule. We're on track to achieve and exceed the AB 32 target of being 15% below 2005 emissions by 2020. But a large portion of this emission reduction is due to the launch of Peninsula Clean Energy. So we're really excited to have achieved this goal, but we know we have to think of more innovative strategies to continue deeper reductions. So I started to mention that we are in the process of updating our Climate Action Plan. We initiated work with a consultant in August and have engaged the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission with our different milestones. First in January, starting with the GHG emission inventory, which I just showed you on the previous slide. In March, we went back to the commission to introduce some GHG reduction targets and start to review the adopted measures in the Climate Action Plan. And then just this past month in May, we went back to discuss potential new greenhouse gas emission reduction measures. And so this is both a progress update of what we've done on our adopted Climate Action Plan, as well as to inform Council that we are working on an update to this plan, and we're in the middle of discussing new and exciting measures to adopt in the Climate Action Plan. And we'll actually be hosting a community workshop on June 6th at the main library in the Oak Room to solicit some feedback on the measures that we've drafted and would like to include in our Climate Action Plan. In July, we plan to go back to the commission and start to really finalize those GHG reduction measures, and then we hope in October to bring the commission a draft Climate Action Plan, and hopefully receive from them a recommendation to come back to city council to adopt the plan. And that is the end of my presentation.
Excellent. Excellent. Good stuff, that's all I can say. But do we have questions?
No questions.
No questions? That $50,000 grant, very impressive. Thank you. Comments, yes?
Good stuff.
Yeah, good, good stuff. And if there are no questions from the Council, I'll open it up for public comment. No speaker slips. We'll bring it back to the Council and say, "Great job," and we will see you, if I'm reading right, in October.
The fall.
We'll have lots of other steps we'll take. I have faith. Thank you so much, Ms. Chow. Job well done. Okay. That brings us to some reports and announcements, and we will conclude in, or adjourn in memory of a few outstanding Samiteans. But do we have any announcements? No? Yes. Councilmember Gothols.
I will be at the SFO Roundtable tomorrow night, or Wednesday night? What's today?
Monday, still.
Wednesday night. What time?
I was wondering if you were going to be there, but thanks for updating us.
I will be there, but I need you to cover the Fire Board meeting in July, anyway.
So, so done. Anybody else?
Just going to say...
Yes, please.
The mayor and I have our first JPA meeting for the 101 managed lanes this Thursday, so stay tuned for more information on that.
Yeah. Good stuff coming to 101. Councilmember Gothols can't have it done fast enough, apparently.
I'll make it to the study session on time. It'll be great.
Guess he was stuck in a little traffic. So...
I was carpooling.
Oh, blame it on somebody else.
Have we been in that carpool?
There were two of us in an electric car.
You're living the dream. Okay, so...
I have an announcement.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
I just got a new fuel cell car.
Congratulations.
Hydrogen.
Hydrogen.
Water is the only byproduct.
Interesting.
No charging. But you got a...
No charging, but you got to fill it with hydrogen.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And there are not that many gas stations around?
No, 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 but it's another step toward, you know...
Sure.
Doing what we're doing with our climate action plan that Kathy and Andrew are working so well on.
Excellent. Okay. So, tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of two gentlemen who gave a lot to this city. The first one is David Ivan Lampfier, and he died at age 89 on May 15th. And did I not pronounce it right? Okay. He looks a little... So, David served the San Mateo community in many ways. First of all, he is survived by his wife Jan of 54 years. He has a daughter named Susan Grill, who's married to Daniel, and Diane Redow, who's married to Rob. And he was the proud grandfather of three kids, three grandkids. So, in addition to being active in his church, he served as a board member and long-term block captain for the San Mateo Police Department Neighborhood Watch Program. He also served the San Mateo County Fire Department through the Peninsula Fire Buff Club for over 23 years. As fire buffs, he and Jan enjoyed providing canteen services to firefighters in San Mateo County at all hours of the day and night, as well as holding multiple leadership roles within the organization. Then, he also worked as a volunteer at the San Mateo Library, where he helped create the 101st Airborne Screaming Eagles display, and was responsible for cataloging many of the artifacts for this historical relationship that we have with the 101st Airborne. So, David was deeply loved by his family and friends, and will be remembered for his encyclopedic knowledge of history, automobiles, and other forms of transportation, honesty, quick sense of humor, and a wonderful laugh. And then, the other person that we'll be concluding or adjourning tonight in memory of is John Kelly. So, the San Mateo community lost one of its true humanitarians with the recent passing of John Kelly. Best known for his selfless dedication to service for others, he touched so many people throughout his life. He serves as a, he served as a priest and teacher at Sarah High School until 1979, and then moved on to community service, where he served as the executive director of Samaritan House for 14 years. John is credited with significantly expanding services at Samaritan House, including the addition of free medical services. His belief in the power of restorative justice then led him to mentor inmates at San Quentin, often driving several nights a week up to the prison. When that travel became too much for John, then he focused his attention closer to home, and he mentored and supported many of our youth in the Police Activities League soccer program. John spoke for those who could speak, who could least speak for themselves, and in so doing, he elevated the collective community conscience on the importance and, community conscious on the importance and value of every single individual, no matter their circumstances or setting. People like John Kelly are few and far between, and the best way to honor John's legacy is to continue his passion and commitment of service to others. So, with that, let us have a moment of silence for these two contributors to our community. And with that, we'll adjourn for the evening. Thank you.